Good evening. Thank you for your patience. Sorry, we're getting started a little bit late. Welcome to the November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the Berkeley School Board. If you would like to follow along on our online agenda, the agenda is posted on the district website. I am now calling this meeting to order at seven twenty-nine P. M. Ms. Chanda, will you please call the roll?
Good evening. President Mike Chang will join us shortly. Vice President Jennifer Korn.
Present.
Director Anna Vasudeva.
Presente.
Director Jennifer Shenosky.
Here.
And Student Director Nuna Kamu.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now approve the agenda for this evening's meeting. At the request of staff, Action Item fifteen point one, Mobile Communication Devices in Schools: Creating a Safe and Focused Learning Environment, will be retitled to Policy on Mobile Communication Devices in Schools: Creating a Safe and Focused Learning Environment, second reading. And the superintendent comments will be moved to follow the report out on closed session. Are there any other requested changes to the agenda? Seeing none. Is there a motion in a second to approve the agenda? So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Great. I believe we have a Native American Heritage Month District Land and Commitment Acknowledgement.
Good evening.
Thank you. I was going to save it for my comments, Vice President Korn, but I will read it now. Berkeley Unified acknowledges that our schools reside on Huqiong within the ancestral and home territory of the East Bay Alone people, where families have always lived as stewards of the land for thousands of years to this day. We honor these first peoples of these lands and their ongoing collective resistance and resilience in the face of settler colonialism, as well as their current-day activism and their work to continue to practice their living culture. We commit to being in solidarity with indigenous peoples, both locally and globally, taking action to create and maintain supportive systems for native youth in our schools, and to be active participants in contributing to the thriving present and future of Berkeley Unified's indigenous youth and Alone peoples of Huqiong. This is an acknowledgement that should be reserved not just for this month, which is Indigenous People Heritage Month, but should be observed at every single convening, and will make a point to make sure it's a part of our agendas going forward.
Thank you, Superintendent. And Director Shenosky, will you report out on closed session?
Sure, thanks. Okay, so closed session was called to order at five thirty-seven P. M. Director Jennifer Korn, Director Anna Vasudeva, and myself were present. Director Khadija Brown and Director Mike Chang were both absent. The board heard an update on item three point one and gave direction.
Thank you so much. And now Superintendent, would you like to share your comments this evening?
Good evening, BUSD family. It's me again. Okay, we have the whole thing here when you guys come. So I say good evening, and y'all say good evening. Ready? Good evening, BUSD family.
Good evening.
Thank you. I'm so happy to see so many faces here. I was actually going to keep it brief, but now that I see so many faces, so many new faces, I got some things to share and say, so get comfortable. First of all, we have a lot of good news to share here in BUSD. The California Department of Education, or CDE, has released the two thousand and twenty-five California Dashboard. And the dashboard is an online tool that helps communities across the state access important information about kindergarten to twelfth-grade schools and districts. We are a school district that has both PK all the way up to twelve and even adult school, so our data is definitely reflected in the dashboard. The dashboard is known for its colors and for its cool dashboard visual. Literally, it looks like the gas gauge on many cars that you all drive. But these colors are more than just labels. They actually tell a story. And so each color reflects both how our students performed the previous year, the status, and how much they've grown from last year. Sorry, they actually show how they perform this year, the status, and how much they've grown from last year, also known as the change. And by looking at both the status and the change, the district lifts up, the dashboard lifts up movement, momentum, and meaningful growth, rather than just static scores. And so this is what makes it a very powerful tool that tells a story about our collective work. So drumroll, please. Come on, y'all. This is like audience. There we go. BUSD has achieved the highest possible performance level on the California Dashboard. We've achieved a blue in E.L.A. and mathematics and college and career readiness. Y'all better shout about that. Listen. So with our student assessment performance in spring two thousand and twenty-five, BUSD also has, no longer has any student groups at all. No student groups are in the red. So you could already imagine on that gauge, red is the lowest and the most extreme, and then blue is the highest, and that's the way we want to go. And so we have seen that not only is BUSD in the blue for E.L.A. and math and college and career, but we don't have any student subgroups in the red. No small feat at all, and definitely testimony to the hard work and the commitment of our educators, the brilliance of our babies in all of our classrooms, and the collaboration and work that we've done in partnership with you, many members of our community members, and our families. So you're going to hear, you're going to receive a newsletter coming out that gives you a lot more information, but I just could not resist the opportunity to tell y'all. We are doing big things in BUSD, and we have a lot to be proud about. Our hashtag this year, in case you didn't know, is hashtag.
Berkeley Proud.
Tough crowd tonight. All right, here we go. So let's talk about tonight's agenda, because I know that's what you all are here for. Tonight, we're going to hear from our Student Services Team about an exciting potential revenue-generating initiative underway in BUSD, the Children and Youth Behavioral Health Initiative, also known as CYBHI. I don't know how you say that as an acronym, but it's California's statewide initiative intended to make behavioral health care more accessible. CYBHI includes several opportunities for LEAs, or school districts, to retain, sustain, and grow behavioral health services for students, and provide an avenue for districts to receive reimbursement for services that we already provide to our students in BUSD. So tonight's presentation, we'll talk about that fee system and how Berkeley can actually recoup some dollars for the work that many of our educators and our counselors are already doing in service of our students. We know that the topic of cell phones is likely the topic that has brought many of you here. It's a topic that has been top of mind for many in our community, something that many of you all care deeply about, and just an ongoing larger conversation that's happening across the state. BUSD adopted a mobile communications device policy in the fall of two thousand and twenty-four. This year, we took the opportunity to strengthen and clarify that policy so that it is more aligned with current research, feedback, and the realities of our schools. In October, we presented a draft policy to the Board of Education and the public for what we call a first read. And tonight, we return with a recommendation for further revisions that reflect what we have learned since that initial presentation. Because this topic is so important to many of you and to us, and to our babies, because they're waiting to find out what happens, this item is not going to be placed on the consent calendar as typical for policies that come to the board. Instead, the staff will be presenting a full presentation to the board tonight and taking you through a public journey, if you will, from the original policy, which stated that smartphones and mobile communication devices should be turned off during instructional day for all grade levels, to the recommended policy that we're going to be presenting this evening, which says that smartphones and mobile communication devices shall be turned off during the day, the entire school day, for pre-K through eight, and then smartphones and mobile communication devices shall be turned off during instructional time only for those students in ninth through twelfth grade or high school students. Following the presentation, we will be asking the board to take action on the policy. At our last board meeting, I shared that staff will be bringing this draft cellphone policy back for further discussion, and I hope that many of you are here tonight, not only because you heard me say that at that last meeting, but perhaps because you received the flyer that we sent out or the communication that we sent in partnership with our Berkeley Parent Teacher Association. I also know that some of you all are probably here without even knowing that cell phones are going to be on the agenda tonight, but I know that you are here because you care about our students and our staff. And so I encourage you all, regardless of why you have come, to stay, to not just come and make comments and leave, but to stay and really engage and hear the presentations that staff has prepared, but more importantly, hear as the board discusses and engages with these topics with staff. And so if you cannot stay, I do understand it's nighttime, it's dark, and I cannot stand this time of year where it gets dark. Anyway, that's another story. But I understand you might need to leave for various reasons, so we do encourage you to join us online, because these are hybrid meetings. And if you cannot join online, please know that our board recordings are posted on our website, so you can engage in that way as well. Finally, y'all happy? Finally. Each November, we honor Indigenous Peoples Heritage Month. We just read our land acknowledgement, but this is a month for us to reflect, learn, and celebrate the first stewards of this land. As I shared in the earlier communication this month, Karina Gold reminds us that healing begins when we choose to move differently, when we listen, learn, and act with intention and respect. We invite you to visit the district's website, where you can find resources, family guides, and other information regarding Indigenous Heritage Month. And we also ask that you join us in recognizing the enduring presence, leadership, and wisdom of indigenous peoples whose contributions contribute to enrich our community. I said that was the last thing, but it's not. This is really the last thing. Last month, you might recall that we celebrated LGBTQIA+ History Month, and tomorrow is Transgender Day of Remembrance. It's an annual observation that honors the lives of transgender people lost to anti-transgender violence. BUSD is committed to providing a safe educational environment to all of our babies that allows them to fully be who they are, free from discrimination, harassment, and bullying. We also will continue to hold the line and reject any actions that dehumanize, threaten the rights of transgender and LGBTQIA youth. I see you snapping back there. Thank you. Finally, I want to remind you all, maybe just tell myself, that next week, BUSD schools are closed. We wish you a wonderful fall break. We hope that you find ways to rest, to restore your spirit and soul, and we'll see you back after the break. That's end for me, Vice President. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Ford-Moore-Tell. My hair caught in my glasses. We will now move to the public comments section, component of our agenda. There are two opportunities for public comment at each meeting, now and at the end of the meeting. Please note that we have a large number of speaker cards this evening, and only half an hour for this first round of public comment. If you do not get to speak at the beginning of the meeting, we encourage you to stay and speak at the end of the meeting. You may also email your comments at boardofed@berkeley.net. In addition, I want to assure those of you who have written to us over the past days and weeks that my colleagues and I have read and carefully considered your comments. The board does not respond directly to comments or questions made during public comment. Board members, the superintendent, and staff do take notes during public comment, and we may follow up with the speaker after the meeting. This is a hybrid meeting, so we also have some public commenters online, in addition to the commenters in the boardroom. We are designating, I think, twenty minutes to in-person speakers, and that will be followed by ten minutes for online speakers. Each public commenter will have one minute to speak, not depending on the amount of speakers, each commenter will have one minute to speak. Please note that the microphone will shut off at the end of your allotted time, so time your comments accordingly. I'm going to call two names at a time, so that the speaker who's next in line can come forward and wait near the mic. And I apologize in advance if I mispronounce anyone's name. In addition, if I call your name and you would prefer to cede your time to another speaker, you are welcome to do so. I do not see any student speaker cards. Is that correct? Okay, great. I'm going to start with five speakers on cell phones, and then move on to some other topics, and then if we have time, I will call more speakers on cell phones. So I'd like to start with Grace Yang, followed by Erin Fowler.
Good evening. My name is Grace Yang. I have students at Berkeley High and King. We are in a crisis with electronic devices in education and in society. Technology meant to make life easier is in many cases hurting us. Not all technology, of course, but much of it, especially social media. Our children are called the navel-gazing generation. Is that what we want? Distracted by screens and disengaged from the people around them? A recent New York Times article put it plainly. If adults struggle to focus with endless digital distractions a click away, imagine asking a sixteen-year-old or eleven-year-old to do it. It isn't just bad for test scores. It's inimical to learning and unfair to our children. We are handing kids something addictive and asking them to self-regulate it. Most can't. Giving students even few hours of tech free time means eye contact, real conversations, and laughter, with a friend sitting right next to them at lunch, not a TikTok influencer who doesn't know they exist.
Thank you, Ms. Yang.
The cost of not acting is clear.
Ms. Yang, thank you.
Genuine human connection.
I'm sorry, but there's many people who are waiting to speak. Thank you so much.
Hi, everybody. I'm Erin Fowler, and I've been a teacher in BUSD for at least seventeen years and a teacher for twenty-five. I'm working without a contract. I'm also a mom of two teenagers here at BUSD, and I am here from Willard to ask for a locked and secured cellphone policy. I just read through a meta-analysis of over fifteen hundred studies about the correlation between increased screen time and difficulties concentrating. That didn't even include children with diagnosis of ADHD. What we found is there's an increased correlation, and every minute that we can offer our children a screen-free time to be social, to focus, will improve our outcomes for academics. We know that just being aware of anticipating notifications affects students' ability to concentrate on reading, and this is a top priority for me as a teacher. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next two public speakers I'd like to call are Jenny Dobern and Kiri Jewell. Come on up.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jenny Dobern. I have a student who is in the sixth grade at Willard and a high school student in the tenth grade. I'm here to support a bell-to-bell type of policy. I was disappointed to see what has come forward. I think if states like the state of New York, Virginia, districts like New York City and L.A. Unified School District can do it, we can do it too. They are taking an evidence-based approach to their policy, and I would be proud to live in a district that could follow and add our name to that list. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Kiri Jewell. I am the parent of a kindergartner and a fifth grader at Sylvia Mendez, and I am strongly in favor of a bell-to-bell policy from kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade. I feel like this is the issue of our time as it pertains to the development of our children's minds, and I really implore you all to have a lot of deliberation, a lot of consideration to do our very best as it pertains to these policies, to do the right thing for our children. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next two public speakers I'd like to call are Scott Hoffmeister and Versal Mitchell.
Can we, Virgil and I speak during union minutes instead?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
There are like four of you, right? Are you all speaking during union minutes?
There is. Two of us are speaking in public comment.
Okay, then how about?
Sorry, BCC's president is saying that he would like them to be.
Someone has to do public comment.
Talk about this.
Right, that's why I called him for public comment. Is that what you want? Okay, Versal, please come up for public comment. Take it away.
Okay. My name is Scott Hoffmeister, and I'm the president of the Willard PTA, speaking tonight on behalf of our unanimous PTA board about the mobile phone policy. One of BUSD's core priorities is equity and closing the achievement gap. AB thirty-two sixteen cites multiple European studies showing that test scores improved significantly at schools that banned mobile phone use, and that the most significant gains in pupil performance were made by the most disadvantaged and underachieving pupils. Across countries, the research is remarkably consistent. At best, schools see remarkable gains, educators have higher satisfaction, and students are also happier. At worst, there's no difference. To my knowledge, there's no evidence of harm from tighter school day limits. So our request tonight is to defer action on the proposed amendments and to send the cellphone policy back to the policy subcommittee for more community engagement and a full consideration of bell-to-bell, powered off and away and secure.
Thank you. So I believe there's four speakers on special education, only two. Versal, and who's the other?
Me.
How much time do we give?
One minute each, if it's public comment.
We're giving five.
Okay, well, can we move the union comment? All right, we'll move your union comment earlier and give you five minutes. I don't totally understand.
Wonderful solution. Thank you. Yeah.
Can I ask a quick?
I guess so. I'm confused about.
I think what you're saying is you're asking for five minutes for five speakers on the same topic as public commenters, but not as the union time.
But we put in five parts.
Okay. I see four cards. So how about four minutes? Okay, great. Four minutes. Go for it.
All right. Hey, Samantha. So two years ago, I spoke to you folks about the situation the classified sped staff were experiencing at the high school. I described it as an emergency, and it was, comparing it to having multiple classrooms on fire, and it was. Today, I wanted to briefly update you all. We appreciate your help in putting the metaphorical fires out. There have been too many improvements to mention right now. We appreciate the current program manager. You should hang on to him. We also especially love all the new IAPP hires this semester. But the district also needs to make sure that we retain all these great new classified employees that have been helping to bring safety, stability, and consistency to our most at-risk students in scary times. Veteran IAs, especially the sped twos, possess a wide variety of skills. At the high school alone, we are expected to demonstrate competency in behavior management, de-escalation tactics, pedagogical rhetoric, and academic knowledge across the board, from film analysis to stoichiometry. These skills take time to develop. They require practice, and practice requires retention. The aforementioned consistency. What I'm asking you tonight is that IAPP two speds be paid in income that we all know from the class and comp study is on par with other local districts, local districts that we are in danger of losing these skilled and talented employees to if we don't. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Versal Mitchell, and I am a member of the BCC E group here behind me. Thanks for showing up. I have served as an instructional aide to special education at Willard since the pandemic. I'm here to advocate for enhanced support for classified IA special education staff to effectively support our students' complex needs, particularly in special education. We must ensure our staff are properly supported in both training and financial compensation. This is vital to serving Berkeley's diverse community and achieving successful outcomes, both during regular school day and after-school programs, aligning with, and I quote, "BUSD's mission: enable and inspire our diverse student body." My five years in the district, spent largely at Willard, have offered my deep insight into the world of education. I want to thank the leadership for the decision to hire more permanent classified staff at Willard. I'm a little touched, because some of our friends aren't here anymore. We had a rough season last year, and I'm acknowledging that, because my colleagues matter. For the first time, this site is realizing that new permanent members, rather than heavily relying on outside contractors, I've enjoyed working with people on the daily. Kids need consistency. However, for instructional assistance across all school sites, including our high schools, it creates a stable learning environment for teachers to do their job, if they have a good team, if we work together. We, as paraprofessionals in special education, are seeking proper compensation that reflects our professional experience and dedication required for these critical areas, including working with divergent learners, crisis prevention, trauma-informed care, and mental health first aid. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mitchell. The next two speakers are Mimi Main and Dan Brownson.
Good evening. My name is Mimi Main from BUSD. Bridge the Care Gap focused a bunch of us parents focused on the after-care situation. I was going to thank some people, including the superintendent, but I only have a minute. So I just want to make sure that we're continuing to focus on making substantive changes, because the status quo is not acceptable. It's mid-November, and we all know how quickly things will move, and all of a sudden, it'll be two thousand and twenty-six in application time for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school years fast approaching. To that end, I have a few questions to throw out. What is the current gap in capacity? How can we best take advantage of the next few months to create a more efficient, less cumbersome, and better communicated application and enrollment process? And how can we support efforts to continue hiring staff so we can increase capacity across the district? So yeah, a continued focus on this topic would be much appreciated. And then also, I know the starting salary for instructional assistance at John Muir is two thousand and twenty-seven thousand dollars. We have to care for these people. They do incredible work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mimi.
So by now, you probably all know who I am. Unlike our esteemed superintendent, I actually like this time of year, because it means that I no longer have to wake up before dawn, which has documented deleterious effects on cognition, both in youth and adults. But my main point tonight is that we are told that facing state budget cuts, that there's nothing we can do, there's just no money. But Berkeley is one of over nine hundred school districts in the state, all of whom are facing budget cuts, and yet somehow there's nothing any of them can do? Maybe y'all need to start thinking more like a union, because while one might be helpless, nine hundred wouldn't be if they all went and demanded more money from the state.
Thank you.
So that we can fund our sites and our professionals.
Appreciate you. The next two speakers are Dan Goldstein and Kyle Delwich.
Hello, I'm Dan Goldstein. I'm a parent of a BUSD seventh grader. I was delighted to learn tonight that there will be a bell-to-bell locked-away policy for pre-K to eighth grade, and I'm now urging you to adopt a similar policy for Berkeley High School, or at least leave that possibility open. Smartphones don't just damage learning. They prevent social interactions and relationships. They don't just pull students away from schoolwork. They pull them away from one another. Please include high school in the complete bell-to-bell policy. I think all grade levels deserve to have a rich social experience. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kyle Delwich. I have a third and a fifth grader at Washington Elementary. So my kids are still little, but I care a lot about this issue. I've never been to school board meeting, but I care enough about this issue to come. So I strongly support a bell-to-bell ban at the high school in addition to the middle school. I'm glad that it's in place at the middle school, but I would also like that for the high school, in addition to all the educational reasons that people have already mentioned, but also for the mental health benefits. I really hope that when my kids get to high school, it's a safe place that's largely spared the mental health issues associated with phones that have been well documented in the literature. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Rachie Lee and Mary Catherine Plunkett. Our next two speakers are Rachie Lee and Mary Catherine Plunkett.
Good evening. My name is Rachie and I have a ninth grader at Berkeley High and a seventh grader at King. I'm speaking to you tonight as a parent and a digital wellness educator. Forty percent of the SMP make their profit by keeping us glued to our screens. Our attention and our children's attention, including our teenagers, is the primary currency of today's economy. It feels like this is a losing battle, but we are not powerless. We can make the right choices here at home. Phones do not belong in schools, not at any grade level, not in the bathrooms, not at passing periods, not on any campus time. I urge this school board to reject the district's proposal tonight that would only require devices to be off during class at the high school. You do not need to take that vote tonight. At a minimum, instruct the district to research how other districts are implementing a bell-to-bell at their high schools.
Thank you so much.
Many other high schools are doing it. You can too.
Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Mary Catherine Plunkett. I have a sixth grader at Willard and a 10th grader at St. Mary's. This is my first school board meeting. I wanted to come talk about the cell phone policy tonight. I know there's a lot of factors in considering what's right for our schools and our students at Berkeley. I have experience with my son at St. Mary's. They have no phones during the school day policy and they've really seen that the students are engaging with each other during lunch. There's a lot more interaction at school. When they made that change, it made a really big difference. I understand Berkeley High is a lot bigger than St. Mary's, but I really think it's worth considering, you know, some of the larger school districts, the policies they're looking at, the impact that it's having on students, and considering, you know, some different choices in terms of what we're offering for our high school in terms of the limitations. My, my daughter's in sixth grade now. We're really trying to keep her off of social media. It's hard, so anything that we can do at school to really make them engage more with each other and not their phones is great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next two speakers are Emma Cott and Julian Saret.
Good evening. I'm Emma Cott. I have a sixth grader at Willard and a fourth grader at Emerson, and I'm also proud to be a part of fourth and sixth grade parents who have decided together to delay giving our kids smartphones. And I can tell you it's so much easier to do it when we're all in it together. To that end, I believe that we should have a bell-to-bell ban in, across all of BUSD schools, K through 12. Make it simple, one policy. It's more enforceable than any alternative piecemeal plan. The bottom line is, I believe, kids just do not need their phones when they're at school and even having them in the hallways and the lunchroom and the bathrooms is distracting and it also discourages face-to-face connection. In case of emergency, which I know is some, some things that some parents are concerned about, they can contact the children's school as they always have. I strongly urge the board tonight to vote no on this proposal and to go back to the drawing board to explore a bell-to-bell policy for all grade levels. New York City schools, LAUSD has done it, so can we. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Julian Saret. I'm the father of three girls, with my wife here, so one girl in elementary and two in middle school. And so I'm here and to be in favor of a bell-to-bell policy. And when researching why people wouldn't be in favor of that, I read the reason that was about family organization and the flexibility that having access to a phone gives. I think it's actually the opposite and with the experience of having three girls, we, we're fighting every day in terms of family organization. And I think there's a vicious circle. If kids have access to phones and it's not locked somewhere, they think about it, they reorganize their day based on that, and they're not getting organized. I think one of the values that schools can bring is teaching kids to get organized, to face, well, what they're going to face in the future in their professional lives. So I think there's a reverse impact. If we don't lock phones, kids will always count on this flexibility and will not get organized.
Thank you. All right, we were so efficient that we have just three more in the, in the room speakers who I'm going to call and then we're going to transition to online speakers. The first is Jennifer House. The second is Shannon and Michael, and the third is Craig.
Thank you very much for letting us speak tonight. My name is Jennifer House. I have children at both Washington Elementary and Longfellow. I'm also a therapist and I wanted to share some experiences from that. I have a number of clients that we would say are in the Gen Z, the Gen Z generation who were given phones at a very early age because this research was not here yet. They had phones sometimes as early as fourth grade, fifth grade, all the way up through high school. Those clients are the ones we are now treating for anxiety, depression, this experience of intense addiction that was named around looking and checking constantly for our phones. And I recently mentioned to one of my clients that there's a movement now to get phones out of school and he said, "Thank God. Please, can you do this for us in high school? If I had had this, it would have changed my life." This addictive experience of constantly checking and looking at our phones is one that we can only oftentimes monitor in school because parents are not doing it at home. Make school a place for us to address mental health in this way.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shannon Berman and this is my partner, Michael Pareda, and we're the parents of a fourth grader at Washington, Go Washington. I am also a scientist and I work in science education and I work very closely with science teachers. And everyone that has come before me about this issue of, of cell phones has been very articulate, so I'm going to keep it short. I plus one everything that has been said and we support a more restrictive ban on mobile phones, including a bell-to-bell policy, K through 12. Thank you very much.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name's Craig Melham. I am the father of a 13-year-old girl at Willard. So I'm really glad that the, the bell-to-bell is, is part of the policy for, you know, K through eighth grade, but I really do think it should go through high school. The difference between the policies where, you know, they're allowed to take them out in between classes versus just leaving them for the day seems pretty small. The impact on those kids who, who wanted to bring them to school but have to leave them at home seems pretty small compared to the benefits which are far larger for everybody else, for the parents and the kids who are going to leave them at home anyway. Just this afternoon, outside of Willard, there was some kind of commotion. The teachers couldn't get the students under control because everybody's whipping out their phones and recording things. That's still going to happen. So why don't, you know, why don't we realize the benefits to that last little mile and make kids leave them at home? The science is pretty clear and the benefits are there. So I urge you to reconsider the policy.
Thank you so much. We're going to shift to online speakers now. I'm going to first promote Michelle Wolfson and after that, Rohini Har. Michelle, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Michelle Wolfson. I'm a parent of 11th grader at Berkeley High and I strongly support teachers being able to determine the policy that happens in their classroom and that students having the freedom to use their phones between classes. I think the current Berkeley High School cell phone policy of teachers collecting cell phones at the start of class, putting them in the pouches, and I don't support banning it. Cell phone policy is best determined by each teacher and I really value the fact that they are close for the times that phones are needed for classwork in case of emergencies, help students who need accommodations with IAPs and 504s, and they're not singled out or stigmatized for having it. Berkeley High School is a huge campus. Cell phones are how students locate friends for lunch, locate club meetings, contact their counselors, their teachers, check their email for appointments, and lunchtime is an important time for student connectedness and developing friendships. Banning cell phones will invite power struggles, deception, getting a second phone. Teachers have enough to manage without turning into cell phone cops and I think that SOs are trying to develop relationships with students, not be in adversarial position. I think we should pop phones in the cell phone holders, pick them up as class gets out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle. Rohini, you're up next.
What, what is the name that we're promoting?
It was Rohini, but she seems to have disappeared. So maybe we'll shift to Navarre Oaks and Anna Thanukos after that. It was Rohini Har, Anna Thanukos, and Navarre Oaks. Navarre, you've been promoted. You can go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Navarre Oaks and I'm here as a parent of a TK and kindergarten student and I support bell-to-bell. But what I'm really here to talk about also tonight is the lack of aftercare and how badly it's affecting our family. It's a rather extreme situation. I don't know if anyone on the board has lost sleep or shed tears over this, but I most certainly have, as recently as today, because it's deeply impacting my job. I have to bring my kids to aftercare outside of the city. I have to transport them there. I'm not able to work during that time. I lose important meetings. I'm not able to do my job as effectively as I could. It's a deep impact on me personally. And then for my children, they are small and they don't understand. They are begging me, "Why can't I stay at school? Why can't I be with my friends?" They don't understand that there is a limit in capacity, but they understand that when the bell rings, they're kicked out of school basically, but their friends get to stay and play. They have a very hard time transitioning. We're basically asking them to hold two full-time jobs, right? One in the morning at school and one at a completely different place for aftercare. It's a lot to ask of a four and five-year-old if there's ways you can expand capacity.
That's your one way. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. So our next speaker is Anna and then after that, Rohini is back. Anna, can you go ahead?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. You've got one.
Okay, oh, here's my video. Okay. Hi, I, my name is Anna Thanukos and I have two fourth graders at Emerson Elementary, one of whom is right here and is listening to everything that people are saying with a lot of interest. They'll soon reach high school where with this policy, most of their classmates will spend their lunch hour and interclass period scrolling through addictive content that's designed to monetize their attention without regard for their mental health. Our students' attention is a valuable resource and cell phones are a huge distraction, even if they're only available between, even if they're only available between classes and at lunch. A 2024 survey by the National Educational Association found that 83% of teachers support bell-to-bell bans, and I think BUSD should step up and do this as well through the 12th grade. The policy already includes sensible exceptions for broad emergencies and the needs of individual students and these should remain. Parents with a family emergency can call the school so that their child can receive the message in class. Teachers want this, many parents want this, and most importantly, ultimately, our students will want us to have done this for them.
Thank you. Rohini, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you so much. I'm the PTA Vice President at Willard and I have students at BHS, Willard, and John Muir. I'm asking the district to strongly consider this outpouring of advocacy very seriously. The evidence is clear, phones and smartwatches undermine focus, learning, and mental health. I teach at UC Berkeley to graduate and undergraduate students and I use a strict no-text policy in my classes. It's been enormously successful and students whine in the beginning, but they adapt quickly and they actually appreciate the focused environment. We can do this, we must. And right now enforcement in our district varies widely by classroom and I think that inconsistency hurts kids. I strongly support the, the bell-to-bell policy through eighth grade and I don't think we can vote on the high school level right now. There's far more serious discussions that, about what that would mean. Kids leave campus for school, they could have jobs, and we need to be clear on if we're asking them to leave it at home or in their backpacks and how that's going to be enforced.
Thank you so much, Rohini. We appreciate your comments. Our next two commenters are Lindsay Nofelt and Cara Bartlett-Bins. Lindsay, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay. Hi, my name is Lindsay Nofelt and I'm speaking as a parent of elementary and middle school kids on the mobile device policy and specifically on the term significant engagement as required by AB 3216. The California Department of Ed does have a definition of significant engagement from both LCAP and ESA laws. The law asks for two-way communication, transparency, and inclusiveness. It asks that the informed input of stakeholders is reflected in order to address the needs of all student groups. Other area districts like Castro Valley are taking the spirit of the law to heart and they are seeking out opinion, having conversations, and running pilots. I am asking the board to vote no tonight on this policy in order to engage with our high school community further to find the right way to limit phone use. Thank you.
Thank you. Cara, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi. Yes, hi, I'm Cara Bartlett-Bins. I am a parent of a Malcolm X first grader and will have a TK next year. I'm also a representative of the Bridge the Care Gap group of several speakers from tonight. We are a group of committed and concerned parents who are working with you all towards accessible, safe, and enriching after-school care for all families. We recognize that the lack of after-school care is a longstanding problem, but that the status quo is unacceptable. What we are looking for is leadership and progress. We want to see what is going to happen in the next several months to make sure we do not have 700 families on the waitlist the first week of school, whether that is a collaborative effort with the city or expansion of onsite programs through whatever means is necessary, in addition to more timely and clear communication with families to better set expectations so that they're not scrambling in the final weeks of summer and the first weeks of the school year. You heard from some of our other parents, this is a real problem. Please help us fix it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our last two public commenters this evening will be Siobhan Noble and Anonymous Anonymous. Mystery speaker. Siobhan, can, uh, let's go ahead and promote Siobhan. Siobhan, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Sorry. Thank you. So as a parent of a 10th grader at Berkeley High, I support Berkeley High's current cell phone policy, which is that students put their phones in pouches, making them unavailable during instructional time, but available during the five minutes between classes and at lunchtime. I don't believe a total ban on cell phones at the high school level is appropriate or helpful. Students need their phones outside of class time as tools so they can find friends at lunch, arrange pickup, or find out about changes to after-school sports or clubs. This is a tool that actually supports in-person social activity. Also, some students have jobs or challenging life situations that require these tools. Parents also need to be able to reach their children. While I understand the concern about too much cell phone use, I believe that could be handled with dialogue with students and a curriculum around digital literacy. The school is correct to have a say over what happens in instructional time, but outside of that time is the realm of families and students. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Anonymous Anonymous. You can go ahead and unmute yourself and show your comment.
Hi there. I didn't mean to join as anonymous. My name is Hillary Kilimnik. I'm a parent of a current eighth grader at King Middle School, an 11th grader at Berkeley High School, and a recent Berkeley High graduate. And I'm here tonight to urge the school board to reconsider the current cell phone policy proposal. I appreciate the effort to address phone use during instructional time, but the policy does not go far enough. It puts too much burden on the teachers and leaves too much room for variability between the classes. My son, who graduated last spring, was allowed to use his cell phone in a number of classes throughout his time at Berkeley High, as long as he finished with an assignment and there was extra class time left over. This encourages kids to rush through their work to get back to their phone, undermining the very learning we want to support. I respectfully ask this board to adopt a stronger policy that keeps phones off and away for all students from bell to bell. This would provide clear, consistent support for our children's learning environment while allowing for reasonable exceptions and site-specific adaptations as needed.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your comment. That concludes our public comments for this evening. Thank you, everyone, and I'm going to turn it over, I believe, to my colleague, President Chang, who has just arrived.
Thank you so much, Vice President Corin.
Thank you so much, Vice President Korn. You did a great job. I was relaxing in the back there. Such a different view. So we're going to move on to committee comments. Each committee will have five minutes to address the board. Are there any committees here to speak? Not hearing any, seeing any, no committees? All right, how about union comments? Each union has had... Matt Myers of the VFT is here.
Hello, Superintendent Ford Mertel and the Berkeley School Board Directors. I'm Matt Meyer, President of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. I'd like to start off by taking some time to celebrate the work of our educators. In last week's A+ news titled "Four Years of Ford Momentum", Superintendent Ford Mertel reported the newly released California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress. Not only did our students experience less of a pandemic slide compared with our neighbors, we have seen positive growth in student outcomes every year since 2022. The results demonstrate that more of our Berkeley students are meeting or exceeding gray-level proficiency, which highlights the work of our educators have done these past three years. Our students continue to exceed the county and state results by wide margins. The November newsletter also discussed the power of participation and stated, "By showing up and giving their best efforts, students help ensure that the progress of themselves, their school, and district is fully represented." Educators are side-by-side with students, showing up to work and giving their best in the classroom. Our educators are professionals and continue to take this work seriously, including implementing the new elementary literacy curriculum, which included a total revamp of instructional methods. These gains depend on BUSD being able to continue to hire great teachers and support staff as well as keep the staff we have spent time and dollars training. We know too many young educators who recently earned a teaching credential come to the conclusion that one can't afford to do this essential work in an expensive place like Berkeley. We lose these teachers not just other districts, but to the profession. We also know many educators who have taught in BUSD for longer and want to continue to work here because they love this community. These teachers play a key role in being induction coaches, mentors, and have well-established relationships with families year after year. Our schools would become dysfunctional without their leadership and experience. Many also question, at this point in their careers, if working here makes financial sense. So as we celebrate the last four years of student performance exceeding the county and state results, we also need to remember that, right now, our educators are below in total compensation between 3.2% and 7.7% compared to neighboring districts. These numbers are deceiving because they do not reflect our out-of-pocket pay for healthcare, which reduces actual disposable income. Let us remember that when looking at comparative districts, Berkeley ranges from dead last to below average depending on step in column. Let us remember that many educators do not have proper credentials, and our interns are on emergency permits. We need to increase compensation to attract candidates to our district who are properly credentialed for our students. The district cannot continue to scramble in August and September to fill positions. We recognize that this takes time to realign priorities when it comes to spending. We do not accept this as an excuse, though, but a call for action. Our spending on non-public schools and non-public agencies is almost three times the average spending of districts in our county and six times the average spending of districts in our county that are the same size as BUSD. This is unsustainable, and one of the reasons BUSD has not been able to offer competitive salaries. BUSD needs vision and a plan to rein in costs to make ongoing investments in our workforce, which is really an investment in our students. As you can see from the hundreds of emails you received over the past two days, our educators have been eagerly waiting to hear from the district what BUSD believes that investment entails. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have other union comments? I'm not seeing any. Moving on to board member comments. Which of our board members would like to go first? Okay. Director Shnatsi.
Hi, good evening. I'll be brief. I also want to acknowledge tomorrow as Trans Remembrance and Resilience Day. You stole my thunder there, Superintendent. I also want to thank all of the educators and parents and caregivers who reached out to us about settling a fair contract, something that I support and appreciate the advocacy around. And I look forward to our conversation about the cellphone policy later this evening. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Director Shnatsi, who would like to go next? A student, yes.
We have a student.
Of course, I'm sorry. We should have had you go first. Thank you so much. Would you like to go? Great.
Okay. Thank you to everyone who came to give public comments. My name is Nina K. Marino, and I'm a senior at BTEC. I'm so honored to be a co-schoolboard rep along with Korea. I'm an active participant in leadership at our school, and I'm part of the school site council. I hope to serve my school by advocating for our needs. Tonight, I just have a few quick updates. We're hosting our annual Resource Fair and Friendsgiving tomorrow, and we're really looking forward to the turnout. We also just wrapped up a multi-week career workshop with Rising Sun, which is a program which prepares you for union construction trades, which went really well. And finally, our Growing Leaders program continues to teach students culinary skills and serve the community through our site's food pantry. Be sure to visit the Growing Leaders website to try our amazing meals made by our classmates. Thank you.
Director Vasadev.
Hi. Thank you so much to everyone who came out tonight. So I wanted to thank our students for plugging Growing Leaders. It is really an amazing program. If you have not yet purchased a meal there, please do. I wanted to thank everyone who came to give public comment about our cellphone policy, IA retention and compensation, the district's after-care program, and fair contracts for our workers. I also love, I think there was a parent here that said, "This is my first schoolboard meeting. Please don't let it be your last. Come often." Because I love, we're here to serve you. So please, you know, if you can dial in over the phone, but let us know how we're doing, and I hope it's not your last. As a parent of adolescents, a lot of your comments about the dangers of, you know, addiction on cellphone use, mental health, all of that really resonates with me. Serving on the policy committee, I can tell you this discussion has been going on for a year. So it's something, and I know the superintendent is going to go, "I'm not going to steal your thunder, Superintendent." I know you're going to go into more detail. But it's something that, you know, we're really looking at thoughtfully. The staff has been incredibly thoughtful about how they've approached this. They've looked at best practices from other districts. So it's not something that's been done lightly. But your advocacy is definitely helpful in pushing us to get to a better version of the policy. But as we've said in the policy committee, the policy is one thing, the implementation is another. And I know the superintendent's going to go more into detail with that. But something, I wish I had this attendance at the policy committee. I never get this from many people. But in that committee, something, if you had been coming to those meetings, you would have noticed that I have actually been echoing very strongly for a public forum so we can discuss implementation. Because I think that's where the rubber hits the road. The districts that have done this really well, particularly at the high school level, I hear the comments about a ban. It takes staffing to implement that, right? So that's a real discussion. Like, the people that have done it well have hired people to go and monitor this, right? So that's a discussion, and that's a budgetary line item. There's a lot of complexities that go with that. And so I really hope you come to the forum, Superintendent. I'm not stealing your thunder. I know you're going to drop the details in your presentation. But stay for that. If you're not able to stay for the rest of the presentation, watch it at home. They're recorded. But please attend that forum, too, because I think that is a very important part of the discussion, particularly for the nuances having to do with the high schoolers. Other than that, I just want to quickly announce that we, I'm very excited that the district was awarded the Asian Pacific Islander School Board Members Association Ethnic Studies Champion Grant. Can we get a big applause for that? This is from an organization called APISBA that is led by Asian Pacific Islander School Board Directors throughout the state. So Director Chang and I will be at the conference, at the California School Board Association Conference, to accept BUSD's recognition. But we're there, and we want to make sure that we acknowledge the hard work of our ethnic studies teachers, especially Joemi Ito-Gates and Hasbek Minasyan. And so I want to make sure that we acknowledge the work of everyone who goes into implementing our amazing ethnic studies work in this district. And with that, I'm very much looking forward to the superintendent's presentation and to the forum in December, and hope you will attend it as well. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Next on up, Vice President Korn.
It's always a bad idea to go towards the end because everybody's already said everything. So I'm just going to quickly echo a few things. One is that I really want to stamp the superintendent's exciting news about the recently released California Dashboard Results and our students' achievement and growth. It's really a huge deal to be in the blue and to not have any of our student groups in the red. And I'm really proud and really grateful to all the educators who have made that happen. Yeah, that deserves another round of applause. We're working on it, I promise. I also want to echo the comments about Transgender Day of Remembrance, and I want to say how proud I am to work for, or to serve on the schoolboard of a district that is really dedicated to protecting and supporting our transgender students and families. I serve on the G-Shack Committee, the Gender Equity and Sexual Harm Advisory Committee, and particularly the Gender Equity Subcommittee of that group, which is a lot of families who are really scared and really looking to us to protect their transgender children in a really challenging time for their families. And again, I'm just, I'm really proud of the work that we're doing in this district to be welcoming and inclusive for all of our kids and families. I was so excited to hear Growing Leaders shouted out twice. I believe they're serving Japanese curry tomorrow. I don't know if there's any meals still available, but Growing Leaders is the best Thursday night meal in town. You order in advance, and then you go pick up your dinner at Willard, and it's so good. And it supports these amazing programs at BTEC and Willard. And what else do I want to say? I also am looking forward to our discussion of the mobile device policy, and I think I'm going to save all my comments and questions about that for that actual discussion. I hope that all student, staff, and families have a restful and nourishing week off next week. And the last thing I want to say is that tomorrow night at Berkeley High School is going to be the first-ever swing night. It's tomorrow, and the dance students, I believe, are going to be teaching us to swing dance, while the jazz students are going to be playing swing music. And it's all happening in the gym at Berkeley High tomorrow night, and I believe it's open to the community. So come dance with me tomorrow night.
Wow. That's exciting.
I'm pretty sure I've been encouraged to invite anybody and everybody.
Thanks, Board Directors and members of the public, for bringing your hearts in mind. Again, as you can see, Berkeley is a really unique place, and we really value Berkeley values and local control at a time when there is a lot of strife at the national level and challenges with local school district values. So I want to echo other schoolboard members' comments on recognition of Trans Day as well, and also, again, reflecting Berkeley values, reflect how important it is that here in Berkeley, we have an ethnic studies program. We've had an ethnic studies program for decades. It's very critically done and is one of the best, if not the best, in the nation. And it's being recognized by the California School Board Association for APISBA for that reason. So thanks to those folks who are involved in it and are engaging on this controversial issue, which is not easy to do. And again, we have a holiday coming up around the corner, a major family holiday. It's such an important time to have gratitude about, you know, what we have and our family and our friends and this amazing community that we have. So I want to say I have gratitude for you as a community and for coming to this board. So next on up, we have the consent calendar. So it is now time to approve the consent calendar. Yeah.
President Chang, we have a tradition here in Berkeley to recognize elected officials, both past and present. And I don't have my glasses on, but I think I see our former schoolboard director Evelyn Vasquez here. And so I just wanted to recognize you. Can you just stand up and wave? We talk about our diverse student body, academic excellence, and positive contributions. And Evelyn made a contribution to our district when she was on the dais, and I'm sure is doing wonderful and amazing things off the dais. I just wanted to greet you and welcome you because you deserve it, elected official.
So nice to have you here. So I think we have...
I would like to pull item 13.16 from the consent calendar.
13.16, okay.
And then I'm happy to move the rest of the consent calendar.
Good, do you want a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so that's 13.16 moved off the consent calendar. Do we have the ayes?
For approving the rest of the consent calendar, aye.
For approving the rest, yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So unanimous. Thank you. Where would you like to move 13.6 to?
We can move it to immediately after, if that's the will of the board, or... Right, I was going to say right now, like immediately after the consent calendar, or we can move it after the discussion and action items.
I would rather move it to the end of the meeting.
Yeah, let's do it that way.
It's fine. We have so many people interested in the cellphone policy.
Exactly. Good plan, good plan. All right. So, so moved. Fair, that's fair. All right, discussion item 14.1. We have an update on the Children's Youth Behavioral Health Initiative. I'm going to turn it over to Associate Superintendent Hugendike and the rest of the team. Is sound working?
Testing.
Okay, I can hear you.
Can we start? Okay. Good evening, Governing Board, Superintendent, and community. Thank you for allowing us to present to you tonight an update on the Children's Youth Behavioral Health Initiative and our progress on implementing a fee schedule reimbursement design. Next slide. So this next slide, again, we always begin with our BUSD mission. But on this particular slide, we also added our student services mission for you as well. Next slide. All right, so the outcomes for tonight's presentation are to provide an overview of the Children's Youth Behavioral Health Initiative and California statewide multi-payer fee schedule for school-linked behavioral health services and to share BUSD's year-one deliverables and our progress to date.
All right. And before we get started with the content, we just wanted to anchor this presentation in the context of our district's goals and actions. So on the left-hand side there, you see our five LCAP goals, one of which is wellness and belonging. And on the right-hand side are BUSD's strategic pillars, also calling out wellness and belonging, which is an area of focus that we hear as we go through the LCAP development process, but also as part of our BUSD Mental Health Needs Assessment Themes. BUSD conducted a mental health needs assessment in 2022 that identified these four themes that you see in the middle of this slide. Those themes are the creation and sustainability of a diversity-informed environment, equitable distribution of resources and services, really with regard to supporting mental health services at our schools, development and support of district-wide protocols, policies, and processes, and focus on student well-being and prevention. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rosina Karen.
Thank you, and hi, friends. So next slide, please. So the Children Youth Behavioral Health Initiative is an outcome of collaborative effort involving the State Department of Health, private insurance providers, the Department of Education, and the California School Counselor Association. The California Youth Behavioral Health Initiative, also known as the Fee Schedule, is a long-term initiative with a sustainable funding model. The Fee Schedule is specifically designed to provide an ongoing source of reimbursement for behavioral health services in our school. for behavioral health services in our schools. Next slide, please. So as you can see in this graphic, the CYBHI Fee Schedule is the system that allows our district and other districts to work with the Alameda County Office of Education-led Alameda County Network to draw sustainable shared funding from both medical and commercial health plans for student mental health services. We will be able to bill directly for our staff services and our community-based organization work. Next slide, please. So we chose to align with ACOE as our consortium for this effort, and we are one of nine local districts working with ACOE as our mechanism to access these funds. Next slide. And this slide has a linked video about the Fee Schedule. It's very short, two minutes, with a general overview of the program, and we encourage everyone to watch it. And now I'll pass it along to Doreen, who will share more details with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. This next slide that we have projected is a slide that just provides an overview of the types of behavioral health services that exist in BUSD at our school sites. So brief counseling, support groups, executive function support, and mental health supports are all service types that we would see enacted and do see enacted at all of the schooling levels here in BUSD. Next slide. This slide here is just a sample to articulate and make concrete the types of providers that are approved and described in this initiative for fee reimbursement. So for example, school-based providers include our employees, who are credentialed folks with PPS credentials, and sample of those titled roles would be counselors, social workers, school psychologists. The state also has approved certified wellness coach roles, and people who are certified wellness coaches, you would see them working inside wellness centers, and they might be a care navigator as well. The next two sample providers include mental health practitioners, and these are people who are licensed practitioners, and we would see those folks providing direct services to our students largely through community-based partnerships and the high school wellness centers. Next slide. This graphic here is a representation of the providers and services that exist in our school district currently. So you can see that in the center, we have BUSD student services, the four types of services that I mentioned a few slides ago. And then if you take a look around the perimeter of this graphic, you'll see that the high schools are represented, you'll see the high school health center with arrows that indicate the high school health centers, practitioners serve the high schools, there are also wellness centers at the high schools. Over on the right side, you'll see the adult school, elementary schools, and middle schools represented, and a host of community partnerships that we have who provide services at the elementary and middle school sites. And up at the right, we couldn't forget our county office of education partner. They are working directly with us in the Student Services Department. They provide infrastructure support, training, and PD for our practitioners. Next slide. So here, I'm not going to go through every example listed, but I am going to go through one that would be really easy for us to understand, the way in which there are set rates and reimbursable services that will be happening as we implement. So let's take a look at that first row. In the yellow column, we can understand that there are a variety of ways that we identify students' needs in our district. And counselors in that top row, they get referrals for a student need in a variety of ways. When that school counselor determines that an SST needs to be facilitated and then arranges that, prepares for that, manages that case, and facilitates the SST, that's an approved activity that aligns with a set rate that we get reimbursed for. So there's a code that matches with that SST intervention and support that's being provided for the student. And eventually, after the bill gets submitted, there's reimbursement. Next slide. So we wanted to make sure that we shared what our year one deliverables were, and we have three year one deliverables. First, operationalize the required infrastructure within BUSD central office systems that we need to launch this billing. We are going to start billing and receive reimbursement for MTMDSS-aligned direct services. That's a long acronym, and it's multi-tiered, multi-domain student services. And the last deliverable is to generate revenue for this fee schedule with our aligned services, and our target is $200,000 to $250,000 as we launch. Next slide. All right. And one more graphic to think about, okay, we're going to launch, we know there are providers, and there are activity services for our students, and what are our phases? And so we're really designated phases based on who our providers are and the readiness of our system. The first group of people you'll hear who begin to submit activities for billing reimbursement will be high school counselors and wellness coaches. Second phase to come online would be community partners and middle school counselors. And the third phase, OFI and miscellaneous specialty positions. Next slide. I think that, turn back over to Jill.
Yep. So as we wrap up our presentation, I do want to acknowledge the work of Doreen and Rosina you see here. They have been doing the lion's share of this assessment of our current behavioral mental health ecosystem and understanding the places that would be possible for reimbursement. They have started to conduct counselor trainings with initial focus, as you saw in that last slide, with our high schools, and they're really trying to apply our continuous improvement lens of what works with this process, what has been a challenge, and then how do we make it easier. We've also initiated conversations with our labor partners about this work. So coming up, you can see a number of things that are on deck as we turn our attention to this next semester, really thinking about how we utilize our existing systems for consent and notification with families. We are working with legal to review forms and some of the network designs as we're going to be collecting information from families to participate in these services. And we're aiming to start billing in January. That's like the target date for initial billing. And then we will turn our attention to some of that infrastructure to support the work ongoing. And then finally, on the last slide, we have included a couple of links, again, with additional information about CYBHI. You can see the link there for the video that Rosina mentioned earlier. And then for those people who are curious about the mental health needs assessment, we did have a board presentation back in 2023, but the report is also linked there. And with that, we'll take any questions.
Board members' questions? Director Sinasi.
Just a quick comment and then a question. First, I want to thank you, and I'm so excited. We had a lot of money and a lot of attention going towards mental health during COVID. And as usual, in education, it's like there's new issues coming up, and so funding often decreases with that. And so I'm really grateful for ACOE's leadership, and I'm really grateful that we are part of this early adopter cohort to get this done. My question is about federal cuts to Medicaid and how that might impact some of the anticipated revenue that we'll get, and therefore, some of the programs that we're offering.
So none of us know exactly what's coming in the future, but what I can say is this is state funding. So it's California-funded initiative, the Children Youth and Behavioral Health Initiative is a multi-tiered kind of whole system net to support our children, and this is one piece of it, and it's state funding.
Thank you, super helpful. Any other questions? Board members?
Yeah, I have sort of a related question. I'm wondering about undocumented students and families and access to services and whether there are any barriers here around having to prove eligibility or not, or, yeah.
Thanks for asking that question. So one thing that we'll make sure is part of communication is that students, regardless of whether or not there's a barrier to having their medical information or getting reimbursement, will not be denied services. So all of the services we already apply to our students will remain the same.
Thank you.
Other directors' questions? Director Vasudev?
Just a quick follow-up question to that point. How is that going to be communicated to families?
It's part of the communications. We're going to be really thoughtful and careful. It's why we're starting with just an update to the board about the program in general. And in the future, we will be sharing those details communicated. There are existing details that the state has iterated and the county on informational brochures. Those will be included in our FAQ, which will come online soon. And so families will see not just our district communication about it, but also see that it's in the state-level documentation and brochures as well as county.
And one other follow-up question, and then I'll stop, Dr. Are those FAQs going to be multilingual, or will they be in Spanish and Arabic and other languages? Great.
Yes, they'll be multilingual, and sorry about the the brain pause right there. The FAQs currently also have the brochures in between five to seven different languages that the state and counties already made accessible. Yes.
Thanks so much for your hard work on this. One final question, can you really quickly refresh our memory on multi-tier, multi-domain?
Yes. So the reason, the acronym multi-tier, multi-domain is an acronym that's used largely in counseling world, school counseling, and it's it's so that we remember that there are multiple domains tiered. When we talk about tiered, one, two, and three, people usually just think about a classroom, and so multi-domain is the key, academic, social, emotional, behavioral, and there are tiers in all of those domains that we're addressing.
Great, thanks so much. Great explanation. If there's no other questions, I think we're moving on to the next item. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Great presentation. We are on to da-da-da, 15.1. The superintendent's so excited for it.
I'm happy, because many of the members of the public stayed. I hope those that had to leave are able to join us in the hybrid format, or again, remember that this presentation has, is all the presentations of our board meetings going to be recorded and posted on our website. So I am Nikita Formar, the other proud superintendent of Berkeley, and I am sitting here with, yes, yeah, it can't be both. I'm sitting here with Yasmina Vidishik, who's our Civil Rights and Compliance Officer, also known as our Title IX Coordinator for the District. And so we are happy to be able to sit before you all and engage you all in the discussion about our policy on mobile communication devices in schools and our committed commitment together to create a safe and focused learning environment. Next slide, please. I'm sorry, I thought I had a clicker. We always ground ourselves in our district's mission, which is to enable and inspire our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and make positive contributions to the world. And we recognize that there's a there's a lot of concern, a lot of feedback and input around how mobile devices might interfere with our ability to do just that. And so we are here this afternoon or this evening to do a couple of things. We want to provide background and timeline for the BUSD mobile communication devices policy. We want to share data and research that has informed the current policy and our recommended amendments. We would like to present proposed amendments to the Board of Education for that BUSD mobile communications device policy, and then highlight opportunities to engage in implementation of the policy as a community initiative. You heard Director Vasudev say there's a big difference between policy and the implementation and enforcement of a policy. And so tonight, we're just presenting you the policy, really clear and aware that there's still going to be a lot of work ahead of us that is going to require thoughtful engagement and planning and possibly some piloting around the implementation and enforcement of the policy. Next slide, please. So we're going to take you way back, pre-2024. Before 2024, BUSD had a policy called Policy 5131, and that policy was possession of electronic signaling devices. We've already dated ourselves by that title, electronic signaling devices. And that particular policy wasn't known by many, but it existed, and it said that students may possess or use electronic signaling devices, provided that such devices do not disrupt the educational program or school activity, and that these devices should be turned off during class time and at any other time directed by a district employee. That policy also said that no students shall be prohibited from possessing or using an electronic signaling device that is determined by a licensed physician or surgeon to be essential for the student's health. Next slide, please. In 2024, actually, just last year, it was actually Berkeley families who said that that particular policy was not good enough, that they wanted us to really think about how we can change and revise that policy to be more clear and to make sure it's more relevant to our current times. Staff in response to that engaged with some of those families in the form of parent meetings and office hours. Many of the times, it was with staff and board directors. And then the BUSD Policy Subcommittee came together and drafted a new policy called Policy 5131.8, Mobile Communications Devices. That policy was informed by some sample policies that we got from the California School Board Association, CSBA, is a really known entity that many districts across the state work with, and oftentimes are a reference and a resource when districts are drafting policies. We also looked at what we were anticipating to come from AB 3216, looked at that language, and we wanted to make sure that we had a policy that was actually realistic and can be enforced. That was the main thing that we wanted to make sure of, because we know that there are tons of policies, and many of them sit on shelves, or many of them like our previous policy on electronic signaling devices no one knew about, and therefore, they weren't really happening in practice, nor were they able to be implemented or enforced. And so the right side of this slide shows you the timeline. The Policy Subcommittee met in June of 2024 to do a first review and conversation about our new mobile communication devices policy. The committee met again in October of '24 for a second review. And then we brought it to the school board as a whole in October '24, again, for what we call the first reading. The school board actually adopted that policy in November of 2024. While that was happening, there was the adoption of California AB 3216 that happened in September. And so even though that was in September and we were in November adopting our policy, we had had some insights about what AB 3216 would say and what it would expect, and we tried our best again to incorporate into that, into the policy that was adopted by the board on November 6. Next slide, please. I'm mindful that everyone is not well-versed on California policies and laws, so I wanted to pause for a minute to let you all know and understand what Assembly Bill 3216 says. It is the Phone-Free Schools Act, and it was coming from a, from a, you know, a time or even now where a lot of legislators recognize that phones and electronic devices can really interfere with the educational mission of schools. We want to make sure our babies are ready for academic excellence, and so there was a lot of conversations about how, and you've heard it in public comments as well, how electronic devices can actually lower pupil performance, particularly among lower achieving pupils, and promote cyberbullying and contribute to an increase in teenage anxiety, depression, and suicide. So in response to that knowledge and awareness, California said that every school district must by July 1, 2026, develop and adopt a policy to limit or prohibit pupil use of smartphones while on campus or under the supervision control of school employees. Remember, this is by July 1, 2026. Berkeley Unified adopted its cell phone policy on November 2024. The AB 3216 also calls out that there are specific exceptions under which a pupil may still possess or use a smartphone during school time, and that is in case of an emergency or perceived threat of danger. When a teacher or administrator grants permission. or perceived threat of danger, when a teacher or administrator grants permission for use with any reasonable limitations, when a licensed physician determines use is necessary for the pupil's health or well-being, and when possession or use is required in a pupil's individualized education program or IEP. Assembly Bill 3216 was amended to be Cal Ed Code 48901.7. The Assembly Bill and the Ed Code also says that the policy must be updated at least every five years. So bringing you back to BUSD and the policy that we presented to the board and that was adopted in November, the language is before you hear on this screen. I want to call out the language in that policy. It was definitely an improvement from when we had electronic signaling devices, but we knew that there was still work to be done. What that particular policy called out was that our students across grade levels could not use their smartphones, their watches, or their pagers.
I think you, I think you're on the wrong slide.
Oh, next slide, please.
Oh, thank you. I was like, no, I'm not. Yes, thank you. So our policy said that they cannot use any of those devices, again, including pagers, I love that one, on campus during non-instructional time, as long as the device is utilized in accordance with the law and any rules that individual school sites may pose. So I'm sorry, they said that we, that students can use them as long as they met their criteria. It also said that mobile communication devices shall be turned off during instructional times. And it said that students shall not be prohibited from possessing or using a mobile communication device under any of the following circumstances. And again, those circumstances were similar to what was said in AB 3216. So again, that was the policy that BUSD adopted in November of 2024, so last year. In March of 2025, CSBA came out, again, CSBA is that, is that organization that many districts look to for guidance on their policies. And so in March 2025, CSBA came out with updates for their sample policy that was based on and better informed by AB 3216, which had now passed. Those updates said that the policy updated, needs to be updated to add options which offer different approaches to regulating the use of smartphones and other mobile devices. And it also said the policy must clarify language related to the search of a student's personal electronic device. If you recall, the, the board policy I just read to you, we did not have specific language about the search of students' personal electronic devices, and we had not fully taken advantage of the opportunity to differentiate across grade levels. And so with this particular update, the district had an opportunity to further differentiate and restrict cellphone use based on grade level. In October of this year, go back, sorry, we again, met with the Policy Subcommittee to discuss possible changes and updates to our policy. So again, the policy was already in place and passed. We're now talking about amendments or enhancements to the policy. And then on October 15, we brought it to the school board for what we call the first read. Next slide, please. Again, we're going to do a freeze frame because I want to pause and recognize that not everyone knows what a first reading is or how BUSD and other school districts adopt board policies. So I wanted to take a minute to explain that. It's here on the screen, but the summarized nutshell version is that policies first go to the Policy Subcommittee. The Policy Subcommittee is made up of two of our board members as well as staff. These are public meetings and these meeting agendas are posted and there's opportunity for public comments. And so in collaboration with staff and informed by data, community input, as well as other draft policies and samples, that policy committee sits and talks about what revisions might be necessary, or in the case of many of our policies, what should the policy say to start a policy from scratch? This draft is then brought to the Board of Education as a first read. You can think of a first read as kind of like a preview, if you will, but it's an opportunity for the entire board to now look at the policy and weigh in and give feedback, and again, for the public to engage here and make public comments. I think of it again, as a preview, but it's really the first read is an opportunity for a discussion. After the first read, a number of things can happen. And oftentimes what happens is that the policy comes back to the Subcommittee because oftentimes during the first read, which is also what happened in this particular first read, a board director might give additional information or direction or ask some question that they want the Subcommittee or the staff to explore. In this case, apologies, I can't remember which board director it was, but there was definitely some clear direction for the Policy Subcommittee to think about how we might be able to differentiate further across grade levels and grade spans. And so again, the policy came back to the Subcommittee where there was another series of robust discussions to figure out how we might do so. And we are here in front of you this evening with what we call the second read. Oftentimes, people think about the second read as the decision, right? And oftentimes, it is the time for board to take action. But we want to remind folks that this action or the decision that is made by the board does not have to be approved or rejected. It could be that the board is not ready to make a decision and instead wants to engage in more discussion as they do for the first read. And so I wanted to make sure that the members of the public are clear about that process. This is the board's public opportunity to do business. This is your public business meeting. And so it's not about you saying yes and no to everything. It's about really you engaging with staff and community around the things that you are thinking and the things that you are using to inform the decisions that you make. Out of freeze frame and back to the policy. And so now showing you all the policy that we brought forth to the board for first reading in October. Notice that this policy says proposed amendments because this was the first time that the board and the public saw the results of that sub, that Policy Subcommittee. Hopefully you noticed a couple of differences. We had added what AB 3216 said we had to add, which was making sure we have some protocols for seizing, if you will, devices. And so it says, "The superintendent or designee may undertake measures or strategies in accordance with law to limit student access to smartphones and other mobile communication devices. A student's personal electronic device shall not be searched without the consent of the student or student's parent guardian, except in the circumstances that are laid out before you." Again, that was us complying with AB 3216 clarification. And then us trying to take into account the differentiation of the opportunity to differentiate. We had, our policy said that smartphones and mobile devices, communication devices shall be turned off during instructional time at all grade levels. Smartphones shall be turned off during the entire school day in preschool through fifth grade, and smartphones shall be turned off during the instructional time or during instructional times for sixth through 12th grade. So again, during instructional time, we wanted the phones off. For our elementary students, we said needs to be off all day, instructional or non-instructional. And then for our secondary students, six through 12, we said that it should be off during the instructional time only, which meant the students were allowed to use it during passing periods, recess, lunch, et cetera. Next slide. I want to be clear that when we bring policies to first reading, even though again, it's oftentimes after much robust conversation, that first read does not mean that we're satisfied or settled with what we were presenting. And so even we brought that first read to the board in October, we were still grappling with, with several outstanding questions. And one of those outstanding questions really was, and this is no offense to middle schoolers, we were like, what are we going to do with the middle schoolers? We recognized that middle school was a, you know, relatively a unique stage of development that they sit at the intersection of two very different developmental instructional environments. They're beginning to develop independence and they want more autonomy. And at the same time, many are still young enough to struggle with impulse control, self-regulation, et cetera. And so, but we brought the, the first reading to the board and it clearly grouped middle school and high school together as secondary. This is what we were grappling with, both at Sub-Policy Committee and when we brought it before you. Next slide, please. We also brought it for first reading, knowing we wanted to know and needed to know a little bit more about the current student mobile use in BUSD. We wanted to understand the big issues or even understand if phones were a big issue in our schools, how often and when students use their phone, what the views were on current school policies, as well as what approaches they believe are reasonable and manageable. We surveyed 1,600 plus of our high school students. We also surveyed 1,200 plus of our middle school students. We surveyed and got responses for, from 250 plus of our teachers. And we surveyed our school administrators, both principals and assistant principals with 20-plus responses. I'm going to pause now for you to hear from Yasmina to, to get a sense of what those survey results told us and how those survey results informed the further amendment that we're bringing before you this evening.
Yes. Okay. I also do want to recognize that 1,600 survey results for our students and our middle schoolers is more than 50%. So it was a very good turnout and we're very proud of that. I'm going to start with elementary. I know that elementary is not contentious as much, but I do want to recognize that we did get a response. And so for the elementary schools, the responses were from our principals and our vice principals and our teachers. And so everyone was in agreement luckily that all elementary schools have a same policy, which is bell-to-bell cellphone ban in schools. Of the staff members and principals that were surveyed, almost 80% of them stated that cellphones are currently not a major challenge in the elementary school level. So this is on a scale of one to five, level one and two. And if issues do arise, they are resolved through brief conversations with students and parents. What came out of the elementary school survey is what's going to inform some of our amendments that you're, that you will hear later, and that is that smartwatches are actually becoming a bigger concern than traditional cellphones. So we have students that are not bringing cellphones to school but are coming to school with tracking devices and Apple watches. And then that there is always some confusion that arises when parents give very different instructions that conflict school rules. And a couple of examples that came up was no schools, no phones in school, however the students are saying, but I need to answer if my mom calls. And so the recommendation that came from teachers and from our principals and elementary school level said that cellphones should be off school during the school day as they are in airplane mode, and that the calls home obviously can be managed through the office, just like we used to do it when we were all young. They also recommend that parents and student, that we as the district engage in more education for both our parents and students on cellphone use as well as parent controls and age-appropriate policies and practices with, with students. Next slide, please. So for our middle school respondents, this slide where I'm going to talk about, this is only going to be our principals, vice principals, and our teachers. So this is the adult perspective of the middle school survey. The respondents were in agreement that middle schools report having a practice of strictly prohibiting cellphones during school hours. 50% of the respondents, so this very different than 80% in elementary schools, stated that cellphones are actually a major challenge in their everyday work. Our respondents stated that there is inconsistent enforcement by adults, which confuses the students and also creates resentment towards stricter teachers, right? Students are also non-compliant with the policy and they find sneaky ways in which they can actually use their mobile devices when they do have them with them under the table or earbuds. Another thing that came up is again, smartwatches and headphones are emerging as a major loophole to the phone-free schools. The teachers also reported the constant monitoring is exhausting and is significantly cutting into instructional minutes. Because as one distinction is, we can sit here and we can propose a policy and we can adopt a policy, but it, the burden of implementation is actually on our classroom teachers predominantly because they're the ones that are in the class and they have to observe 20-plus kids and their behaviors. They also identified again, that sometimes there is an issue of parents that do not support or actively undermine policy, which means that they text their students during the school day or object to confiscation of cellphones when the administrators do get involved. The recommendation is that there should be a clear, equitable, and consistently enforced school or district-wide policy with strong admin and family buy-in. And that there should be some form of a physical system to keep phones inaccessible. There was a lot of discussion in the survey around yonder pouches and there was a divided opinion as to whether they are an effective tool or not effective tool. Because as you know, we have very smart students that can go around the yonder pouch. And then also they called for strategies around bathroom and unstructured spaces where misuse usually occurs at middle school level. And as well, a call for parents to agree at registration and acknowledge the school policy and help the educators enforce that policy within the school. Next slide, please. And now our babies and what they thought about the survey. I do have to say that their responses were very thoughtful and eloquent, and I really enjoyed reading them. But positive good news, at least, is that about 32% of our middle schoolers do not have a cellphone. And this is very good. And then another 32%. Too little? And another 32% do not, do not, report that they do not use their phone at school. So the issues that the students identified as something that is, that they see with using their phones in school or having use phones at school is that the phones distract from learning. They include games, TikTok, YouTube, texting, and class halls, bathrooms during PE, lunch, and passing. Students, they report that other students often sneak phones, especially in the bathrooms, and enforcement feels inconsistent and phones are enable or tempt cheating. Phones also fuel drama, cyberbullying, mean group chats, rumors, and non-consensual photos and videos. Also, some students report that not having a phone makes them feel left out because they're missing out on the group chats. Many worry that not, that not having a phone in school, so this is not directly to the phone, but not having the phone, they would not be able to reach their parents during an emergency, or they will use access to helpful tools such as calculators or bike directions. Their recommendations is that students in middle school would like to see off and away during class but allowed at lunch, recess, and passing period because they see non-instructional time as their time. They ask for clear rules, consistent enforcement, and step-based consequences, warning, confiscation, and call home, not random harsh punishments. Many oppose a full ban because they need phones to contact family, handle emergencies, medical needs, and schedule changes, and are okay going through, but are okay going through the main office to make these calls. Next slide, please. So our high school, the first part again, is going to be our administrators and our teachers. And they were in agreement that the high school, the current policy at the high school is that phones, phone policies vary by classrooms and teachers. They identify that the biggest issue with phones or biggest challenge is that there's no clear, consistent, school-wide policy and uneven follow-through by staff and admin. Teachers described that it's playing, that cellphone, playing cellphone whack-a-mole with minimal consequences, and teachers feel that they are the only ones that are enforcing the rules. They also recognize that cellphones have a significant impact on our students, that they're demonstrating chronic distraction and addiction-like behavior. They recognize that parents' contact during the school day undermines the rules because they text their students and the students feel the need to respond to their parents. And then some parents refuse to allow their students to turn in their phone if the classroom rule is to turn in the phone at the beginning of class. Students also use burner phones, so they will put a burner phone in the pouch but keep the actual phone with them. So now, not only do they have access to two phones, they have access to multiple phones. The recommendation that came from the high school is a uniform, non-negotiable policy that applies in every class with clear expectations, escalation steps, and consequences handled by administrators, not just left to individual teachers. There needs to be a need for progressive discipline because taking away a phone every day for the entire school year is not going to dissuade students from continually bringing their phone, but also clear indication of who is going to come confiscate the phone, where is it going, going to go, and how it's going to be handled. There's also a need for parent buy-in as well as campus-wide consistency. Our high school students also recognize that phones are distracting and report having trouble focusing. A percentage of them has been accused of cheating when their phones are in their hands. And a lot report conflict with teachers, oh, sorry, next slide, please, thank you. Report conflicts with teachers such as losing points or being called out when texting parents or doing important personal work. And they feel that they're unfairly being judged, that they're off-task. A smaller group also reports peer conflict, arguments, cyberbullying, group chat drama, and recording without consent. A few would describe addiction and isolation. They say that it's harder to socialize. They report ice streams, as well as friends who are always on their phones. Some note also that Berkeley High Wi-Fi is too weak or slow when phones are required for schoolwork. Their recommendation is off and away during class. Their recommendation is off-and-away during class but allowed at lunch, passing period, before and after school. Many say that phones are needed for emergency, parent communication, medical needs, quick school-related use. Lots of students mentioned phone pouches, phone hotels as workable in-class solutions, especially if all teachers use them the same way, or even try to tie their attendance or participation to the phone use, which is not technically legal. Many students argue that it is their responsibility to self-regulate, especially in high school. So after looking, thank you. After looking at all of the survey results, and there's, it's three thousand surveys, there's a lot more information in there, we were grappling with a very kind of different considerations. On one side, we wanted to address the negative effects of cellphones that are very evident to all of us, including distraction and focus time, and as well as a decrease in well-being and mental health of our students. But also, the ability to enforce a policy in a very large school of three thousand students, that it has an open campus, and that is geographically large, which makes it really hard to have a central location to store cellphones because you have to remember that we also have to allow students to have access to their cellphones in case of an emergency. And then also, if students are off-campus during lunch, this policy would not be enforceable because, as you may be aware, our staff members are not off-campus during lunch. As far as discipline and progressive discipline, schools actually cannot legally suspend students solely for using a phone or being in violation of the school phone policy. Could you go back? Thank you. So that's another thing. So we have to figure out if you have a repeat offender, in which ways that would be managed. And then our high schoolers also brought some very legitimate reasons as to why they need their phones, which is emergencies, their IEPs, medical uses, a lot of their calendars and class schedules, and email communication with teachers and counselors and work schedules are all on their cellphones, and they also use their cellphones to pay for their lunch. So that they don't carry cash. So that's kind of the considerations that we took. We also looked at, next slide, please. We also did, well, Anika met with some of the superintendents in our neighboring districts, but we also looked at what policies are being adopted or what practices are being adopted in the districts that are around us. And as you can see, it's a very much a mixed bag. Some school districts are limiting based on grade level, others are bringing a blanket policy that requires either yonder pouches or turning cellphones in in a physical location at the beginning of the school day. But all in all, it's, everyone is either limiting or prohibiting. So after all of this...
Next slide.
Next slide, please. We are bringing back to you now the November amendments, November twenty-five proposed amendments to our policy. So in addition to the search and seizure, as well as the ability of the superintendent to limit the cellphone use in our schools, we realized that it was very important to define what mobile communication devices are. And this would resolve the issue of loopholes in our schools where smartwatches and other internet-based tracking devices go unchecked because they're not a cellphone. So we included a definition. And then, based on the survey results, we also changed the middle school association, sort of, in order to ban cellphones from bell-to-bell in middle school, just like we do in an elementary school, but allowing our high school students the opportunity to use their phones during lunchtime. I also do want to point out that in the actual policy, which is attached, there is a typo in this very crucial part, so read the slide, don't read the word "document." And that's it for me?
No, it wasn't yet, the next one.
Yeah?
Oh, she didn't click. Click again.
Oh, one more.
Sorry.
There you go. One more?
So we...
After that, one more.
You're going...
No, other way.
One more.
There you go.
Okay. So we're back, go back one, sorry.
Go back.
We have a clicker, we just...
We don't know where it is.
It's not working. So again, we're before you today for the second read, asking the board to take action on policy five-one-three-eight, five-one-three-one-point-eight, mobile communication devices, taking into considerations these additional amendments from staff. Again, we've added options which offer different approaches to regulating the use of smartphones. We've also updated the policy to clarify language related to the search of a student's personal electronic device. We've expanded our definition of electronic device, so it's not just electronic signaling, but we also have included the watches, et cetera, that our survey let us know needed to be included. And we've actually differentiated the cellphone use limits based on grade level, again, but actually making the spans a little different. Having smartphones and mobile communication devices turned off during the entire school day for students in preschool through eighth grade, again, another way to say that is the bell-to-bell, which I've heard say a lot this evening. And then for smartphones and mobile communications for our high school students, having those turned off during instructional time only for ninth through twelfth grade. Before we ask the board to engage in a discussion, we want to remind you as directors, as well as our folks here who are in the audience and listening online, that again, this is the policy. What this does not spell out and what we still have a lot of work to do around is the implementation and the enforcement of the policy. And so I wanted, again, distinguish the two, that as the board discusses and takes action, you are not going to be making decisions on yonder packs or the pockets on the walls or anything like that. That has to be done, but it's only done after there's some agreement and decision around what are our expectations for cellphones and other mobile devices on our school campuses. Next slide, please. And finally, I would be remiss, go back one, please. Well, sorry, go back that way. Yes. I would be remiss if I didn't, again, speak to the importance of partnership and collaboration with our...
It's like the parents, then. Your partnership with the parents...
You are not...
It's the person. So again, cannot stress how important it is. We heard it over and over and over in the survey. I myself was a classroom teacher, principal, and now superintendent, and so recognize just how important it is for us to have collaboration and partnership with our families, meaning that when we move towards implementation of a policy, we all have to be moving together because it's a collective responsibility. So again, you heard some of the survey results that said it's hard because the parent is still texting the child. I've been guilty of that myself, quite honestly, when I'm trying to reach my seventh grader and then forget, like, oh, no, you can't respond, and she feels that pressure to respond. Or just when we confiscate phones or otherwise ask our students to do certain things with the phone, and we have families who are saying, no, don't do that. So wanted to remind folks that we do not provide devices at school. I think every educator, myself included, would say, don't even buy them, keep them at home, keep them in your car when the kid gets to school. And so really excited to think about, when we talk about implementation, it's not just about what happens once the babies get to campus with the phones, but also how we can partner with our parents and guardians before the students get to campus by first maybe saying, let's not get them phones, or if they have phones, how do we keep them in the car? Or we also thought about and wanted to share that what we recognize from this whole process, many of our educators, of course, are our parents and guardians, I myself am too, and we've talked to many parents and guardians, is that a lot of this is really about wanting to better understand what we can do collectively to keep our babies safe, to make sure that they are not overly exposed to all the ills and evils that you heard about in public comments, that they are able to be social and in a relationship and in community authentically. And we know that just taking away the phone during instructional day will not solve for that. And so we have been looking at and exploring ways that we could have education sessions or information sessions for families around how to make sure that students engage in social media responsibly, if they have a phone, they use it responsibly, et cetera. So wanted to just name that as something that we also see on the horizon as we think about implementation. As you heard Director Vasudhav speak of, we are planning to have an engagement webinar on December the sixteenth from six to seven-thirty, and that is all focused on implementing policy on mobile communication devices in schools. It will be open to our families and to our staff as well and to our students, but we are thinking about if we have a huge response, breaking those webinars up to have family ones, student ones, and staff ones, or just have a multiple series of them for those mixed groups. Next slide, please. And then again, loud and clear, we heard that families just wanted more resources and information. You heard some studies that were quoted, perhaps in public comments, and so to the right of this screen, we do have some resources for families. And again, we are committed to building this out, not just in the form of our workshops or webinars, but also making a dedicated webpage on our website that has not just our policy, but again, ways that families can learn more about keeping our students safe with these devices. We also, the students did not want us to share this, but even before a policy is implemented or before we even have clarity around what the implementation will look like, we wanted to tell families the kept secret that our students have, besides how to have burner phones and all the things that they are really good at doing, is that parents can actually not only not buy the phone or not send them to school, but if you do for one reason or another, there are ways that you could actually set up limits on the phone use and help us support healthy device use. You could actually pause or lock devices so that when the kids get to school, you can, from your laptop or your device, actually shut it down, so they couldn't use it if they wanted to. You can manage screen time and guide content choices. And so we're also going to be making sure to put on our website ways that you can be proactive and help us implement these policies, or help us do the very same thing that I think we're all wanting to do, which is to make sure our babies are not exposed negatively or distracted from the amazing instruction that's happening in our classrooms. And so with that, directors, we are going to stop and allow you to ask questions and engage in a discussion around the policy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Superintendent. And Yasmina, this is a challenging issue, and you've shown that it's gone through a lot of process. And we're at the phase where there is a policy with a proposed amendment, which I think addresses a lot of the balancing questions that have been raised across age-appropriate levels, middle school, elementary, middle school, high school, realizing that high school may require more flexibility, given that some students may have jobs, they may have non-traditional parenting arrangements, there's the lunch hour, there's a whole host of issues. I know this is an emotional issue as well, we're going to talk this through with these board members. Also, you know, I want to remind folks that after Quorum, I know it's emotional, just refrain from shouting out loud. Look, I've put on my special X-ray glasses, I see everybody, you know, I'll zap you one if you shout out loudly, just joking around. There's no such thing, that kind of glass. So in terms of board action today, you can see on this slide here, should we roll back to that slide, Superintendent, so that that's up there, we're all, everyone to see as well?
Twenty-one.
The third from the end, I think? Yeah, exactly. With the little, you know...
Is it?
Yeah, the flowchart thing, that's super helpful for everyone to see that. So we're having a conversation about this, this slide here today. As with any type of policy, when you draft policy in law, you're talking about scope, and scope is important to consider because it can be over-inclusive or under-inclusive. If you over-dry it, it's going to capture things you don't mean to capture. If you under-dry it, it's going to not capture things that you want to capture. That's why the flexibility and that balance is super important, especially when you're talking about the difference between a kindergartner versus a senior in high school. All three of my kids went through that whole process, of course, and I know that when we decided to agree to allow them to have cellphones in middle school, and the first time I've got, I received excoriation for controlling the use of that cellphone, I realized it opened the door to the underworld, I shouldn't have done it. So anyways, so board members, are there any questions for Superintendent Ford, Mertel, and Yasmina?
I'll start.
Yeah.
I'm sure we all have questions and comments. I really appreciate the thoughtfulness of this presentation and the engagement with students and with educators, and the emphasis on reasonable and manageable policies, I think is really important. I, one thing that struck me that is new to me tonight is this emphasis on mobile communication devices, including smartwatches, and it really struck me that that's already an issue in elementary school, that the elementary school principals are saying cellphones are not an issue, but smartwatches are. And I'm, so I'm wondering if you've learned anything in all of your research about effective implement, because this policy is calling for us to ban those smartwatches. So I'm wondering if you have beginning ideas about what implementation of that is going to look like, because I imagine that's a whole additional challenge.
Yeah, so one of the suggestions that came is that, and I don't have an iWatch, so I don't know, but if it's set to, because the students are saying that they needed to look at the time, right, to know what time it is, and so there is a clock in all of our classrooms. But also, if it's set to airplane mode, it cannot receive notifications, you cannot receive calls or text messages, but you can still tell time if it's that important at elementary school level. I think for us, it would be really hard also to enforce that because what I envision is an elementary school teacher, I don't know if Erin's still here, but greeting all of her students and be like, is your phone on airplane mode? So it's, it does cut into, school-based enforcement does cut into instructional time. So that is maybe with the adoption of the policy, parents might rethink about giving their children iWatches or whatever, smartwatches at that level.
Yeah, it sounds really tricky as a former teacher, and I can also imagine the kid says, yeah, it's in airplane mode, and then ten minutes later, they take it out of airplane So another thing that has come up for me just in the last day or two is have we done any thinking about our after-school programs? And, you know, because bell-to-bell implies the beginning of the school day to the end of the school day, but we have many students who are staying on campus in our elementary and middle schools until six PM and after-school programs. I remember as a principal that cellphones were actually a much bigger challenge in the after-school program than they were during instructional day. Have we done any thinking about that, and if we had any conversations with our learned staff about that?
We did have, the survey did include our after-school staff, so I would have to pull it, I don't know on top of my head. But I think that the theme is across the same, right, that the enforcement is not strong and it's not uniformed, even when we think that it is where we have direct policies. And especially in after-school, right, where kids are more running around, they're not classroom-based, so I imagine that it would be more of a challenge.
I would also add, just to the point you just made, Director Vice President Korn, that even with the amendment, it still says entire school day, and bell-to-bell or entire school day can very easily be construed to not mean after-school, and so that might be something that we amend further to make it clear that it's, you know, smartphones, mobile communication devices shall be turned off during the entire time on school campus or something like that.
Or during district programs.
Yes.
Yeah, I would appreciate an amendment that clarifies that, and I imagine that folks in the learns program would appreciate really clear language in the policy about after-school I guess, well, just the last thing I want to say is that I know in many of the emails that I've received, and I think in a couple of the public comments that we heard tonight, there's been a call for pilots of different approaches. And I wonder, it kind of strikes me from the surveys that you've done, that in a way, the existing practices at school, we're treating the existing practices of schools kind of as a pilot, and we're asking folks to reflect on how their existing practices are working or not working. Do you agree with that sort of thinking? Do you have any, is there anything?
I think that, one, that is true, that there have been informal pilots, right, in that school, we've asked schools what they have been doing. At the same time, I know that once we move to that implementation phase, again, that's the big phase, the implementation and the enforcement of it, we will likely be doing a lot of piloting. Again, there's so many different options of ways that schools could restrict the yonder pouches, the, put it in the, put it in the...
Hotel.
What's it called? Little pocket on the door, the hotel, right? And so we would definitely want to get feedback on what's working and what's not working, and then not only just on where to put them once you get to school, but really, what does that enforcement look like? When we did explore some of the other school districts, we looked at LAUSD and, again, some of the neighbor ones in Alameda County, that's where the rubber meets the road, and I was looking at LAUSD and looking at the consequences, if you will, first time's a warning, the second time referral to a counselor, and the third time is to call home. And I'm just thinking of our babies who are like, call home, right? And so we want to think about, they do say that, and that's no disrespect, but they'll, call home, like, what's going to happen, right? And then again, sometimes when you don't have families on the same page, calling home means nothing, and then you're back with the cellphone the next day. And so back to the point that Yasmina made earlier in the presentation, because it's not a suspendable effect... not a suspendable offense, we are going to have to pilot, if you will, or really kind of try out or consider what are some make sense responses if our babies don't adhere to the policy. So I do anticipate there will still be piloting that, that will happen once we get to implementation.
Thank you. And I would just like to say that I, I, we do need progressive discipline to help us enforce these policies, but I personally am really glad that it's not a suspendable offense. I don't want to see us suspending children for cellphone usage. I think suspension should, that kind of exclusionary discipline should only be used in really rare cases and we want all kids in school learning. So I understand that it makes enforcement more challenging, but I think it's really important. I don't have any more questions. I will just, I'll, I'll end with just a comment about the high school. I, I've really grappled, I've gotten many, many emails calling for bell-to-bell K-12 bans on cellphones and I've really grappled with, with questions about that. And I, I think that your analysis here of the challenges of implementing a bell-to-bell policy in an open campus setting are really real. I did my own research and tried to find any other high schools in any of these other districts that have open campus, off-campus lunch and a cellphone ban, and I could not find any examples of, of schools that have both of those conditions. So I think that it's really important that we figure out how to really consistently enforce a very clear and consistent no phones in class policy. And it's alarming to hear stories from parents about, my child was permitted to play on their phone after they finished their work in class. We, we need to figure out how to be really consistent across our high school classrooms to make sure that that's not happening. But I do think it's important, given the, the conditions of our high school, for our kids to have access to their phones during lunch.
Thanks so much. I'd follow up on that really quickly. For some of those folks here who don't have kids in high school, having had kids in high school, the open layout of BHS and that lunch hour is very different from what you might have experienced in high school, certainly different from what I experienced. If you want to check it out, just go to downtown Berkeley, Shattuck, between what, noon to one, and you see the stream of Berkeley High School students coming out. They have an open campus, it's a very different experience than some of us may have experienced. Oh, thank you so much. Got it. I should have known that with three kids.
To stay away from downtown.
Stay away. You'll never get a parking spot or might get run over by, by people walking fast. Director Shnaski? Oh, Director Vasudev?
Yeah, I just, thank you. I love that this came back to the full board because it's always great to have the perspective of my colleagues, especially those that have been site administrators. So thank you, Director Corn, for your feedback and, and I think you brought up a lot of important points. For me, what was interesting to read in the student survey were the concerns around, the accusations around cheating, like implementing something that is going to deteriorate the relationship between teachers and students, for me, is also like a no-go. So being really thoughtful about that, right? And we also know that our stu, that there are students, and I'm sure as part of their accommodation, if they were special education students and they needed their phone for something, that would be part of their accommodation. But I also want to make sure that those students and their needs are also protected within, wherever, wherever we land on the policy. I like the direction that we're going. I like the amendments that are being proposed. I do say, I think it's important to continue to engage the parents because parents are fundamental partners in this. And so for me, that was going to be my question, I know we typically don't respond to when people shout in the public, but that was what I was thinking as we were going through this. We really do need a parent survey. I, you know, serving on the policy committee, I'm fine putting a little bit of the brakes, like the direction we're going, but I don't want the forum just to be an informational thing. I think you have to go and ask something. And I think we have an amazing opportunity to get feedback from our parents and to also ask, right, are you going to be partners in this? This is really important. We need their buy-in, right? They're, they're a key stakeholder. And Superintendent, I've been guilty too of texting my kid, who's like in class from his watch, right? Like, and so I think it's really, it's really important that we have those discussions and the, and figure out the disciplinary issues, figure out the implementation. I will say, from the Berkeley High perspective, I heard from a sheepish student and said, I, I support limiting, especially during lunchtime, if there's a way that I, that we could limit it. I don't want my friends to know that I think this, right? Like it would be vastly unpopular for my friends to know that I'm expressing this. But I think that, you know, our kids are really smart. Our, our BHS kids are brilliant and they know that this has an impact on their mental health, they're fully aware. But they also want agency to have that conversation, right? And so I think there's more work that we need to do in terms of getting their buy-in also on the policy. But I, but I do think we need to go to our parents in December with questions and then we need to take back that feedback and bring it back to the policy committee because we need to do what's best for our community. I love looking at all other districts for examples, but I think we really need to, we're at, I think it's great that we're having these thoughtful discussions and I want to like applaud the district for all of the surveys that you did for our students and staff. I think that's incredibly useful for the policy committee and you know that, I said this to you there. I feel like we're deciding in the vacuum, how are, how are teachers feeling, how are administrators feeling? So all these conversations came out of that and then you took that feedback. So thank you so much and for, for getting those survey results. And now I look forward to hearing from the parents.
I just wanted to say, Director Vasudev, I feel like I let you down because you were so excited for us to announce the December 16th engagement. And what I did not say is what you just said, that our intent at that engagement was not just to come and speak at our families, but actually to get input and feedback from the families inclusive of having surveys and also having some scenarios for them to respond to. So I let you down, but I'm glad that you were able to capture that and want the families who are here and those online to know that, again, that December 16th was the kickoff to that series of engagements around implementation and what it can look like going forward. So thank you.
You never let me down. Just have thoughtful conversations. Thank you.
This is an important reminder that with the December 16th engagement, a series of engagements, so that's not the end of the conversation. Director Shnaski?
Yeah, so to follow up on parent engagement, I'm just wondering, as you were putting those surveys together, why was the decision made to survey those particular groups and not parents?
We had already gotten some feedback from families in drafting of that first policy that we passed in 2024 and did not do a mass, you know, inquiry to our students and our staff. Most importantly, I was, not even most, I feel that's, first, our staff, because again, as we, we found in this survey, but also from experience, that, those are the people who, one, have the real-time data around what's happening with cellphones and devices, et cetera, at the schools, once the students are allowed to come with them, as well as those who have to enforce whatever policy we put into place. So it was not to exclude any voice, it was to start with the voices of the folks who were, were on the ground and being impacted by this. The babies are impacted too, which is why they were also a part of it. I, too, my mom and I have lots of ideas, but we wanted to start with what actually makes sense for the educators who are there every day? What are they seeing, what are they experiencing and what do they recommend? We heard from lots of families as well as we were doing this process and there was, particularly in the middle school grades, a lot of feedback asking for bell-to-bell. So we were getting that feedback. And quite honestly, at the high school level, it was, it was mixed with the overwhelming feedback from high school families actually saying what you heard some public commentators say today, which is let our students have it during non-instructional times because they need it for certain reasons. So we were definitely getting that feedback. But as Director Vasudev said, we now have a concentrated way to then say, here's what we want to do and let families respond.
Okay, and just as a follow-up to that, I personally support 100% bell-to-bell ban. I hate my kids' cellphones, but I also know that there's a wide variety of feelings about that and the implementation of something like that. And we do need parent support in order for something like that to be successful at all. And so I just urge us as we, as we survey or get family engagement, that we're very thoughtful about, we don't always get full family engagement and feedback, and so I would like us to be intentional about that. I have a couple more questions. So the high school is really complicated for me because I don't actually know how we would implement a bell-to-bell ban and even what we're thinking about for middle school, because I think a lot of the policy, middle school's easier because it's a closed campus, the kids come in, they're there all day, right? I can imagine something sort of working, but they are moving around throughout the day. So it makes it difficult to have one central spot, but it's much smaller as well than the high school, the high school's so huge. So I'm just wondering if there's been thought about the implementation at the middle schools and how that could potentially translate to the high schools, what, what that would look like?
So currently, our middle schools and all of our principals and vice principals were very adamant about having a bell-to-bell schedule. They feel that they have a good plan in place and with, of course, like ironing out the implementation aspects of it. Like you recognized, the middle schools are smaller. Berkeley High has 3,200 students. So it, at King, I think is our biggest, 800, I don't know where Francisco is, 800. So with 800 kids, you could, it's easier to manage, even if you're collecting phones in a central location, the campus is smaller. Berkeley High has four city blocks that is consolidated. So for kids to get to a central location in the case of an emergency to get their phone, it would be impossible. So for middle schools, the principals were adamant about being able to limit the cellphone use by either taking the phones during the day or by having the phones blocked, right, or put away during the day. I don't know that the same is implementable at the high school, just because in middle school, at least you have some repeated teachers throughout the day, whereas at Berkeley High, you have 600, 600, six classes, six different classes and 600 places where students go.
So the idea at the middle school is that kids would come in and put their phones away in some central location and then go off for class, go off for school the whole day?
There's different modalities at different middle schools.
And again, I want to, I want to clarify, it's easier, easier at a smaller school of 800 versus 3,000 plus, but it doesn't mean it's easy, right? And so even when we collected the data at the, at the middle schools, though there was, you know, it was pretty unanimous that, that there was a desire for bell-to-bell, that's not to imply that everything's working fine right now. So there will still need to be engagement groups and pilots, if you will, around what implementation looks like at the middle school level to make sure that it's actually done and complied with by not just most, but all of our students. You know, there's a lot of things that come into play also when you are thinking about even something as simple as put your phone in a pouch, be it the yonder pack, you know, we, I did the yonder packs, I want to say like eight years ago when I was over in San Francisco Unified and our kids are savvy, they figure out how to get out of those yonder packs. And it was a huge expense for the district because they were, they were getting abused and broken, et cetera, and we had to replace them. So we also want to think about implementation, not just who's going to enforce it, but any fiscal, you know, cost, if you will, for any thing that we decide to do. Similarly, when we say, give us your phone, there's liability in that actually, there's hundreds of examples current day and my previous experience where I, you know, you took the kid's phone and something happened to that phone at some point throughout that day, you're liable for that phone. And so again, there's, there's fiscal costs for the district for replacing phones. So when we talk about the implementation, I don't want to imply that it's easy, it's easier at the middle schools, but they're still going to require a lot of communication and coordination with our, with our families, our staff members, et cetera. And that's again, why we're really stressing that that implementation piece is the piece where we really need to come together and figure out, and we might have to do some pilots. With, with the best solution being, don't bring cellphones to school, don't bring devices to school, or if we could work with our families to say, when they get to school, if they have to bring them, to, to figure out a way to cut them off using those technology tools that I just talked about. And I also just want to caution Director Vasde, Shnaski, I did hear you say that we're going, you're talking about these webinars, we have been thinking about ways to engage diverse stakeholders. And the reason why I say that is because I do have, we do have family groups in BUSD who, if I host a webinar, if I host a meeting like this, they do not feel comfortable coming because they do not feel that their voice and their experience is valid or heard or recognized. And I also want to be careful to not just say that there's lots of feelings around devices. For some folks, there's really practical reasons why their babies have to have devices. You talked about our parents, President Chang, I'm sorry, students who are sometimes like pseudo-parenting or have extra responsibilities. And so we want to make sure that when we have these conversations that we recognize it's not just feelings, that there's some folks have those feelings because there are things that they need their students to do. And I want to make sure that whatever forum we have to engage our families and our stakeholders, it really does allow for those various voices and perspectives to come out without ridicule, without ridicule, without accusation or without assumption that those families don't also care about their baby's mental health and wellbeing. And so it's, it's a complex thing. I think we're all committed to the same end and so we're excited to start these engagements on the 16th to figure out how to get it done together.
Thanks so much. Just want to add something, I want to add a comment. Thanks for providing all that information. I want to remind folks again, that while this is a public forum, it's a limited public forum. So please restrain yourself from disruptive behavior and shouting out. If you've ever given a presentation where you have your back turned to the audience and someone shouts out, you know how disruptive that is. And it's an alarming experience to have for someone to do so when your back is turned and they're trying to present information. That said, we understand this is an emotional issue and lots of folks have a lot of interest in it. There is an opportunity at the end of the board meeting to also provide comment. So thank you. I'm going to go on to Director Shnaski.
One last question. So I know for my own child, who is addicted to her phone, she, in one class is told that she can listen to music, which is banned because I've blocked all of the apps, so that no longer can happen. But in a different class, there was a progressive discipline. So the first time her phone was taken away by the teacher for that period, the second time, the phone was taken to the office and she could pick it up after school and I got a phone call. And the third time, the phone was taken to the office and I had to come and get it. And I really appreciated that because even though it was a pain, I, and, you know, I was really grateful because it gave, there was some accountability there. And I waited till she was 13, I thought I did everything right about the cellphone and it's still, yeah, I hate it. So I'm wondering if our policy can have some kind of progressive discipline in it like that? Because I know as a teacher myself, it's really hard as a teacher to have different rules in different classes. And I mean, my kid will say like, oh, this teacher's so cool, I can do this, right? This teacher is terrible because they took my phone away. And maybe if we had, if we as a board provide the structure for that kind of progressive discipline, and then parents will know too, because they'll get those calls and then they'll have to go and pick up those phones and have those conversations with their kids. Because I really do feel myself as a parent, like it's, it's incumbent upon me to make sure that my children are restricted with their cellphone use more than anyone else. Like I can do more than anyone else. So is that possible? That we could add that?
Yasmina can go a little bit deeper into it and I don't want to confuse folks, but there are policies that kind of express our intent and what we want, our values, if you will, that's not probably the best term. But then there's administrative regulations. The administrative regulations is the how-to, it's the implementation, it's what does it look like in practice and on the ground? And again, when we're talking about the, the next series of engagements, that's what we're really trying to understand, like what, what is it going to look like in terms of implementation? Where are they going to put the things? Who's going to collect them? But also in terms of enforcement and consequence, are we going to say, call the parent? Are we going to say, you got to pick him up? Are we going to say, you don't keep, you know, we're going to hold it for a week? All those things are definitely going to be spelled out, but that's not in the policy itself, it's in the AR. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you. And I have one last question. So if we were to pass this policy tonight, but we get the feedback and we decide that we would like a stricter policy in two months, we can bring this back and we can change the policy. Because for me, it's important, I want that bell-to-bell limit immediately in our middle schools. Like we have a policy right now that's gone through a second reading, we know that it's disruptive and we know that we can build the capacity at our middle schools. And then we expand the restrictions at high school with sort of a pilot at our middle schools that we can see if we can implement something stricter at the high schools.
Always can amend the policy, yes.
Yeah, thanks, Director Shnaski, for reflecting that. You know, there's a number of options, members of the public, procedural outcomes that could occur here. Once a policy is passed, it doesn't mean that's it, it could come back, you know. All right, we have Director Vasudev next?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on something really important that the superintendent said about making sure that we have diverse voices at the forum. And so with that, I would like to make sure that our Worldly Interpretation Service is available by the 16th and that we also, yeah, yeah. And that we also, that we figured out because it is going to impact a lot of students. And if we truly want diverse voices, we know that there are families whose older siblings may be taking care of the younger siblings, who may have other reasons why they need their cellphones in after-school programs. So So I just want to make sure that if we're true, right, in wanting those voices, then we're going to have that available and that the survey will also be multilingual so we can capture the perspective of our immigrant families and newcomer families, too. Because I think it's very important that we be comprehensive in our outreach.
Okay, I want to respond to that one because for sure, we're going to make sure that any surveys or anything we send out are multilingual. Definitely committed to making sure that we engage our families and our caregivers across the multiple diversities. Because we are still figuring out how and when we can implement the Worldly platform, Director Vasodan, it might be that December 16th is one webinar engagement. And then when Worldly is up and ready, which we anticipate is probably closer to January, there's another one that we can then implement the interpretive services. But yes, I hear what you're saying, but I want to make sure people don't get confused. I don't want to not do December 16th if Worldly's not in place. I would just commit to saying we will have one for sure where that interpretation is available.
Sure, as our have one in Spanish, it's fine later. But I don't want that to get lost in the shuffle because that's a significant part of our student population that will be impacted by this policy that affects all of our students. So yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Vice President Korn.
Yeah, I have just a couple of quick additional thoughts. The conversation about implementation at the middle school brought me back to this student data where you're reporting that about two-thirds of kids say that they're not allowed, that cellphones are not allowed at all during school and the rules are fully enforced. But then the others are kind of all over the place. But you're, I think you're saying that all the middle schools have a policy. So I'm wondering if we can disaggregate that data by school to help us figure out, is, are there one or two schools that are doing it more effectively? And is there another school that needs some help? And can we help that school learn from the other two?
You want me to name names?
No, I do not want you to publicly name names. I just want to say that I'm looking at this data and it seems clear that the middle schools can learn from each other. They could have a middle school community of practice about how to implement a bell-to-bell cellphone ban. And my other thought on the topic of parent engagement is just, I wonder if in addition to forums about cellphones, if we would consider going to some of our existing groups, like the African-American Success Advisory Committee, like D-LAC, the English Language, the English Learner Advisory Committee, and engaging with those existing groups of families who represent populations who we want to make sure to engage, to have these conversations.
Great. Any other, another question? So this is a, as far as I understand, is an action item, right? So there's been some conversation here about the importance of transparency and further engagement. Recognizing, I just want to be on the record, on the factual facts-on-the-ground record, there has been a lot of prior engagement despite some folks making assumptions that there have not been or assertions of such. There has been a lot of work previously. That said, more transparency is never a bad thing, right? And you're seeing this slide here in front of you. We're having this conversation out in open. It's out public. The amendments that have been proposed, you know, there is, what is it? It's a bell-to-bell up to eighth grade. And the high schools, like concerns about flexibility. We've had conversations about appreciation, about our diverse community, and understanding the inclusivity of various needs of non-traditional families and kids possibly needing to work, the aftercare circumstance. Do they need phones in aftercare? When your kid pivots into aftercare, possibly until six, do you want to be able to reach them? Some parents are like, "Yeah." Others are like, "I'm not sure." So that's a stakeholder interest issue. And there's a lot of different stakeholders in Berkeley on this issue. There's no one single viewpoint per se. So we want to craft a policy that is made in a way that will be implementable. As I said before, is not overly broad in its scope or underbroad that results in us coming back to the table and having to redo things, say, in like another six months. Though, that's a possibility again. Procedurally, we can come back again. I want everyone to understand that. So given that this is an action item and all these, I'm kind of trying to summarize this conversation and I'm not adequately doing for everyone, I'm sure. But you know, I'm asking if there's some form of motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the policy with the amendments described, but I would like a request that we revisit this with more family engagement and with some more information about the implementation, because I do think that that's an important piece. But I'm moving this in order to make a step forward.
Thank you, Director Shnaski.
And I would like it to be less than six months that we revisit this.
Okay, so Director Shnaski has proposed a motion to approve with the amendments that you see in front of you on this flow chart to move it forward. However, with the engagement that we're already planning, December 16th and within, before the next how many months, Director Shnaski?
Within six.
Before the next six months to revisit the policy again. Yeah?
I would like another presentation where we look at implementation in the middle schools and understand the details of that a little bit more so we can see if we can expand that to the high school. So as soon as possible, once we have that information, along with the webinar and any family surveys and caregiver surveys that we can do.
Think of any questions about this motion?
I would just like to add that I would like that revisiting to include thinking about adding language about after-school programs.
Do you want to set a more specific date on the revisiting? Director Shnaski?
As soon as the schedule allows, before the end of the school year. Is that specific enough?
Yes.
Before you all take a vote, sorry, President Chang, wanted to just make clear that the revision around making the language comprehensive to include after-school, Vice President Korn can be made in real time. So if you, so you all can approve the policy with that particular addition. And I'm sorry, Director Vasodan, sorry, Director Shnaski, I thought that's what you meant when you said with the revisions we discussed. We were already planning to include after-school.
Great. So we don't need to like wordsmith that. You'll figure out where it fits in.
Thanks for pointing that out, the real-time aspect.
And I agree to that, being for my, part of my motion, one of the amendments included in the motion.
Okay, so they'll be included in real time as part of this current motion. Are there any other amendments or questions? Is there a?
I'll second Director Shnaski's motion to approve the amendments suggested here with an additional amendment, including after-school programming, and an agreement to revisit this topic before the end of the school year with a more specific conversation about implementation. And family feedback.
Yeah, so which will be starting in December. Is?
We have a motion and we second it.
A motion with a second. So do we have the ayes?
Aye.
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 Aye. So the motion's moved, passed. All right.
We were going to put a slide about how folks can engage in the policy subcommittee and we failed to do so. So I just want to make sure that everyone knows that our policy committee meetings are on our website. And when we do bring back this conversation prior to it coming to the full board, it will likely come to the subcommittee. So that's another opportunity for folks to come and hear the discussion and engage.
Thanks, Superintendent.
We welcome visitors.
Yeah, we get lonely there sometimes. So please come. All right, so I think we had a consent pool, Director Shnaski, for 13.16. We should discuss that now.
Yes, I can explain why I pulled this. This is a contract with, is it Emerges? Emerges for contractors for our sped IAs. And I've expressed it before and I'll express it again, the use of contractors and in my opinion, the overuse of contractors is expensive. It does not promote sort of a holistic approach to relationships within our schools and between our educators and students. And so I would like some more information about this. I see that this is an additional amount to what we already passed earlier this year to cover the costs up through August 30th. So I am curious about where the $1 million increase comes from, is my first question. I'll pause after that and then I have a few questions, if that's okay.
Since you moved this, yeah, you can proceed with questions. Unless you want to wait for Associate Superintendent Hogendike to respond?
I think it's usually easier to ask one question than get an answer, so it doesn't get lost, if that's okay with the rest of the board.
Yeah, so part of this increased cost is we were truing up costs that were remaining from the prior school year. And also part of it is because of increased cost in services. So that, that's the general explanation.
Okay. And I'm wondering if all of these contractor positions have vacancies that need to be filled right now within our district? And what will happen if we fill those vacancies with BUSD employees? Will we be able to stop the contracts and move to an in-house service?
Well, I'm looking at my colleague from across the table because this is, this is an ongoing big project. The short answer is no. We don't have positions for all of the contractors. However, it's important to know that these are services that are needed for students with IEPs. And anytime those minutes are included in an IEP, we're legally responsible to provide them. So Assistant Soup Tobias Espinoza, I don't have additional information.
Yeah, so we do have some of them that are matched up to vacancies, but some of the positions are not. And we are working on figuring out how many are not so that we can figure out if we do need to create those positions and create the matching FTE. In regard to your second part of your question about what will happen after we hire people, yes, we would get rid of the contractors. That is our goal. And so we would be reducing contractors as fast as we can with hiring. I'll do a plug. The Personnel Commission held a hiring event today and we have potentially 21 people in the onboarding process right now that would help us to fill some of these positions and remove some of these contractors.
So just to be specific about my question, so if those 21 contractors were to get on-boarded and start, let's just make it magical, December 1st, then we would be able to terminate those contracts effective November 30th without any problem with the way that the contracts are written?
I'm not sure that we would be able to close it that quickly, but as quickly as what's written into the contract. And I'm not sure that, I think we have 30 days written into the contract at this point for this contractor. So we would notify them, once we feel like we're going to have a start date for these people, we would notify the agency as soon as possible to notify them that we have replacements and that we don't need these positions. The one thing that does cause us an issue is if we do have new students who move in or students who qualify for additional services. As Associate Superintendent Hogendike said, when it's written into an IEP, we are immediately, as soon as that IEP is signed, we have to provide it. And unfortunately, we don't have a closet full of people waiting that we can just throw out there in a classroom the next day. So contractors tend to be where we end up returning to. So we are hoping that we will be able to sort of fill these with our people, reduce the contractors and not have too many additional positions that keep getting added, that we will be able to, through attrition and through other processes, reduce the amount of need we have overall so that we don't continue to add contractors or FTE.
Yeah, I understand that we don't have a closet full of people to step in, but I also think that $1 million in contractors is more than like a closet full of people. So there is many, we should be hiring many people. I'm not saying we eliminate contractors altogether. I understand the legal requirement to provide those minutes and make sure that we have people to do that, you know, at the, you know, turn of a dime, whatever the saying is. So that's not what I'm suggesting, but this is a really large amount of money that's going to contractors. So I would like to see us open those vacancies, make sure that we are putting those positions in our budget so that, and removing them from the contractor line to save, again, to save money and to provide some continuity for our students and also our workforce. So yeah, that's why I pulled this.
If I could respond a little bit, we do have currently about 25 true vacancies that we are working to fill. So hopefully those 21 that we have on-boarding, and there were more than that that came to the event today, so there may be more that end up getting hired. Those will fill up those positions. And then we are looking at approximately, possibly another 30 positions based on the current contractors, which are included in this contract. And so we are looking at determining whether or not those are real positions and we will be bringing back to the board if we do find that we need to create FTE so that we can create the matching FTE.
I have one more question. So last time when we were looking at the after-school contractors, we were given sort of a breakdown of the amount of time that we were getting for that proposed contract. And I don't see that attached to this item. I don't expect that you'll know that off the top of your head, but maybe in the future. I found that really helpful because it lets me compare the cost of contractors to the cost of our own employees. And then the other question I have is, is the million-dollar contract necessary? Or can we do something similar to what we did with the Lerns contractors where we said we'd like to approve a chunk of that because it's required and needed to provide the services that we're providing, and then come back for the conversation to keep it going? So I'm just wondering about that amount.
The short answer is no. I mean, this amount has been calculated based on the number of minutes in the IEPs that we need to be able to provide. That is different from after-school where there's a little more flexibility to put students on a waiting list. We can't do that same thing with students with IEPs.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Those are all good questions. So we now are moving on.
Do we have to make a motion to?
Absolutely. You do, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks for the reminder, Vice President Korn. Do we have a motion?
I, I forget what item number it was. Thank you. Thank you. I acknowledge the concerns that Director Shnaski brought up. And it seems important that we go ahead and approve this item for the reasons that Associate Superintendent Hogendike has enumerated. So for those reasons, I move that we approve item 13.16.
Thank you. Is there a second? Crickets. I will second because of the compliance issue. I also recognize the important questions that Director Shnaski raised. These are short, long-term issues that I'd like to continue working on. So I've seconded the motion. Are there ayes?
Aye.
Aye. Two ayes and two silence means what?
I think I would, I hear what Director Shnaski is saying and I would love to see a reduced amount for this contract.
Okay, so I'm going to kick it back into conversation. What was your position? What is your vote? No, it's not. I'm sorry. Apologize, yeah.
Well, it seems, I mean.
We don't have.
I mean, you and I voted yes.
You're voting which way?
I'm a no.
You're a no. Good, thanks.
For the amount.
We need a direct.
I'm going to abstain.
Abstain, okay.
So this item did not pass.
Not pass.
So does any, are you suggesting that you'd like to make a different motion?
Yes.
Yes.
That's okay, right?
But I guess I'd like to kick it back to the staff to see what's a feasible reduced amount.
Your motion is returned.
So as I stated, we would have brought a reduced contract if we didn't require these services. So we are requesting the million-dollar contract. This is different from what happened with the board's vote on the after-school contract where we have more flexibility in adding students to a waitlist and not providing those spaces.
I will make the motion to approve the contract with the understanding that I would like for it to come back to us. And I'm reluctantly changing my vote and making a new motion to approve this item because I do not want us to be out of compliance and end up with legal fees that far exceed the contractor. But again, and I appreciate that this is, that this is the minimum that you're bringing to us. And so I hope we can continue to revisit this at every opportunity.
Okay, we've changed. Second?
I'll second.
Second? Great. Do you have the ayes?
Aye.
Aye. So this, Director Vastav, was that aye also? Okay, cool. That's unanimous then. All right, thank you. We had a good conversation on that. So.
Those are all done.
Those are all done? Okay. So do we have any public commentators at this point?
Online?
Online, perhaps? Yeah. I'm sorry. Sir, can you provide a, you can, you guys can come on up and you want to make sure to fill out a green card? Yeah. So can we use his other green card for now?
Yes.
So we're going to try to use your green card from previously. What is your name, sir?
Craig.
Craig.
Yeah, can you use the previous one?
I think so.
Craig Malam.
Craig Malam. Okay, we're going to pull that up, mark it as two times. And Craig Malam. And then others, I'm sorry, yes. Oh, yeah, one minute. And others, Mr. Hoffmeister. Okay. So yeah, if you haven't spoken before, please bring up, fill out a card. Good, I can see some green cards there. Craig, you've got a minute. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Firstly, I'd like to apologize for shouting out. That was rude. I apologize. But like you said, strong feelings. I do think a survey of the parents is a great idea, more than just getting feedback. As we know, you get feedback from the people who feel most strongly about things. The survey is actually an opportunity for you to ask some, I think, some more nuanced questions and find what the parent's perspective is on a lot of these things, some of the issues around whether students have additional responsibilities, you know, acting as a second parent, et cetera. It's the kind of thing you can tease out from parents more than probably from the students. And I also think the survey would be an opportunity to ask the parent community for their support. Would you support X? Would you support Y? Does this idea sound like it would work? It's actually a lot of information I think you could, you could gather from the parents. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the recognition of the quorum, the apologies. Apologies are always appreciated. Next on up, do you have a green card?
I, I.
Mr. Hoffmeister.
Scott Hoffmeister. So I just wanted to point out, make one very quick comment, which is related to, there was some discussion of like, we as parents can limit our kids' access to phones at will during school hours. I just want to point out that, you know, for an iPhone, the way that you block all access is downtime. And there's only one downtime period allowed. And we, you know, many parents use that at night in case the kiddo gets out of bed and wants to surf. And so I, you know, that would be something that I would use to say one downtime period during the school day and one downtime period at night, but that's not an option. Thank you.
Thanks, that's helpful. Next on up, I'm sorry, we're doing like old-school, hard-copied telegraph relay. Oh, come on, come on up. Thank you so much. Thank you, Lillian Kang.
Yes, hi. I'm a parent at BUSD. I have a fourth grader and a sixth grader. I've actually taken my sixth grader out of BUSD. Oh, I've taken my sixth grader out of BUSD because of this being an issue. And I was coming here tonight, it's my first council meeting, hoping that the board would think about the long-term effects for our children. And I know we also have to consider, you know, our underserved population and people, like you were saying, who have different lifestyles and jobs and stuff. And I also think the survey, like, I was, I've never heard about us ever having an opportunity to have a say in this, which I think seems very strange for Berkeley when so many other counties and districts have done that. I think as a parent, I'm just asking to please include us because asking the children is like asking kids who are addicted to sugar, do you like sugar? Do you want more sugar? Do you, will you only eat one sugar a day? Like, that survey to me seems kind of pointless to ask children who can't really make, you know, long-term. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Next on up with Grace Yang.
As a parent, I've restricted the phone, my son's phone, many, many ways. You have no idea. But our kids are smart and Reddit lists every single hack possible. It's not enough. The social pressure to be on the phone during lunch is real. We need to be on the same page to get a buy-in from, from the students. I recognize it's hard to implement at all school level, especially at the high school level, but we need to figure it out. The situation is dire. The addiction is real. Our societies are zombies. Look all around us. If we don't do this now, when will we do it? How does a phone addiction, how bad does a phone addiction have to get before we do the hard decision to be on the phone and electronic devices in our schools? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Rishi Lee.
Thank you so much. Tonight, what I heard the priority is, is quote, what's manageable and reasonable. In other words, administrative ease and what is easiest for the adults. I implore you to shift your priority to what is best for student learning and student well-being. I know it's hard. It's going to be hard. I know it's going to be hard, especially at the high school. But you cannot at this point in time, in November 2025, you know, when you still have a good six months before the state law says that you have to have a policy in place, you cannot at this time say it's too hard at the high school, okay, when you have not explored or talked to other districts who are doing this at their high school with open campus lunches. For example, Baltimore City, which is a much bigger city than Berkeley, is doing this with yonder pouches in which they are locking and then unlocking and accounting for their off-campus lunch. Santa Clara Unified is also doing a similar thing. So in other words, please do your homework.
I want to be careful to other speakers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on up, we have a green card.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Vu. I've got three kids in Berkeley Unified.
Hello, Kathleen. We want to start the timer, sorry. One person to manage both. Thank you so much. Kathleen Vu, okay, you're going to get one minute. She's going to start that timer over there. Thanks so much for coming up.
Yeah, I have, I'm Kathleen Vu. I have three kids in Berkeley Unified. I'm going to second what this person also said. What I'm hearing is that it's going to be hard for you and we have to do hard things for our kids because they're worth it. The science tells us that's detrimental and we're hearing, I'm hearing that like it's inconvenient. I'm hearing that like it's going to be hard for me to implement this. I don't know how we all got through like the 90s and 80s and 70s without phones or how we found each other on campus, but we all managed, right? And they can too. We keep hearing how smart they are. They're smart, they're smart, they're smart. Pretty sure they can figure out like how to live life like from eight to four without a phone. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. So are there extended board comments?
Oh, sorry, thank you.
Okay, and then we have Director Schnaski. First on with the person online, can you, Lindsey Nofelt, hello, Ms. Nofelt.
Hi, my name is Lindsey Nofelt. I'm a parent. It is hard to engage with Berkeley Unified School District. Board members and superintendents rotate every few years. Policy meetings have historically been noticed more often than not, only 24 hours in advance, with meetings that happen in person during the workday with no virtual option. If you wanted to find out what happened in that meeting, good luck. There are no meeting minutes available to the public. So far, you've heard from families that have sought out ways to connect. I'm really glad that you plan on seeking more feedback in order to inform the opening of this particular policy again before the end of the school year, but I'm disappointed in the constant insistence that engagement has been robust because it only began after we started demanding it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on up, and I'll know other speakers online, so we have extended board member comments. Director Schnaski would like to make comments.
Yeah, I just want to clarify because I had pointed out that it would be really challenging. I think that it, it's not that it's hard and that's why it can't be done, it's that our high school is a super unique place with an open lunch policy. You have kids coming in and out all the time and you have 3,500 kids at the high school. How many kids do we have there now? 3,500 kids in one school site. So my comment is not that it's not worth doing. There are lots of hard things that we can do. My comment is about can we implement it? Can we faithfully implement that policy and make it work? We have three middle schools. We now have a bell-to-bell policy at our middle schools. We have three middle schools that we can use to figure out how we could expand that to a bigger school. It doesn't, it's not, it's not, it's hard and therefore we're not going to do it. It's, we've got to figure out how to do it well because Willard Middle School has a policy right now and it works sometimes and it doesn't work other times. So what good is the policy if it's set up to fail? That's my, that was my comment and my intention and what I was saying. So we can do hard things. I'm happy to engage in those hard things.
Great, thank you so much, hard things. So we have an adjournment. It is, what, 10:30? Thanks so much for everybody coming and taking the time, sitting late too. Thanks.